Oh, what's called meeting to order at 7:02? There are four, five, six recording devices and a video device. I'm gonna start out here going through the orders to pay the bills. This is definitely all set, all up. And then move in that direction, they end up where they need to, right? No, the weather's draped out just soon as they bought that extra sand and salt.
Of course. This is Town Hall Computer Internet. It's furniture, is that because it's an immediately trying to use? Is that okay?
That is the...
That's what?
It says Town Hall Computer Internet and it's got a bookcase and a desk. Is that okay to put it now? Is it in Town Hall?
Is it in the computer room?
No, no, it's in the back office. So, actually, I don't know if that... I'm actually a little bit uncertain about whether that would be the...
They can make it adjusting entry.
Yeah, yeah.
But I was just wondering if that was an okay place to put it. It's just a bookcase and a desk.
I figured it had to do with putting something in.
And it didn't just have to do with the back office getting a bigger desk in there?
Did you finally get a desk?
Finally got a desk. But I actually didn't check with you to see where we were taking it out of. And we'd be happy to take a second look at that. I still care.
It could be adjusted.
Joyce can do it. I'll do it. I'll just, I'll put it on the front of the pile.
Okay, alright.
And then we check, that's all.
We can talk to Joyce tomorrow and see.
Right.
So now you've got a desk and two tables you can work up.
No, she doesn't have tables anymore, I took them out.
And you took out the table?
Desk, no tables, and a bookcase.
Yeah, so I'll talk to Laura, we'll talk to Laura and Joyce and see if there's something else that...
Someone said business pick up this weekend.
Yes, I see that.
No, but even this weekend, he hasn't got it under.
Those numbers are never big enough to get anybody's attention.
What's that?
Animal control. Martin's bills.
Just kept in...
Twelve dollars here. Eight dollars there.
He puts in a lot of hours. This is what you were talking about here when you said just after. So it's the song, the scene we grabbed, the fettuccine? You mentioned?
It was like a... So it's like the material showed up.
So we have to do more snow now?
No.
I think we can wait. It'll keep, it'll keep. I'm trying to save a tree.
Well, oh, yes, I do have one. Didn't hear last time. I know.
That was the day I was... I scattered all over the town.
Do you have a copy?
Alright, why don't we move on to the minutes? Minutes of 4:1. I've read them twice and I think they're fine. I know I'm not the editor son of the rest of the garage. I think we're getting to the right point where they're... I like the brevity. And it has the document list in it. I think it does make quite a difference when you refer to the document list when you read the minutes.
Does Ron have anything?
Yeah, I have just a couple things here. Under appointments, Lynn?
Yep, I know.
That doesn't look like the correct spelling, is it? I don't want to pick you on that.
Oh, no.
There should be an A in there instead of the E, I think. But whatever it is. And I simply crossed off "of" five-year action plan at the end of that sentence and said "of the report."
Oh, okay.
It's in, I've seen it and I don't have a copy of it, but it is a report. It's a open space report. I don't believe I saw anywhere there that it was a five-year action plan. Okay, there might be an action plan inside the report. And then on the motion, I also said the town in completing the... And I omitted five-year action plan and just put "report" in there. Fix the word "submit" and then Tom, I thought you were gonna represent the select board in there. So I had a little indent insertion of your name, but after Alan Rice?
I offered and Alan said that he was gonna come to each board one by one.
Okay, so that's...
So I really didn't see it. I didn't see it either. That's fine. I offered to do it and he said that he was just gonna go board to board as he needed to.
Those were the only comments that I had.
Okay. I have one because I thought it was worth clarifying and it's under new business, the last... Last sentence. Lukar Koller made mention of a recent meeting and I thought I brought along a copy of what it was and maybe at the end of that sentence, we could put "the quarterly meeting, 3/28/2013, Franklin County Selectmen's Association." So I thought I could give this to you. I don't know if we need it as a document, but it had all the information on it as to what the meeting was. If that would be helpful. But otherwise, it didn't connect anything, sorry to me. The second thing I have is under minutes, it says discussion. And I spent some time this weekend cruising through the Attorney General's open meeting law violations. And there are many instances where boards have been found in violation because they don't have enough information. And I believe that we need to expand at least a couple of sentences as to what the discussion was because we spent 15, 20 minutes on the last sentence of the March 25th meeting where I wanted to add a sentence and we talked about that for quite some time. And we need to include that as what we talked about. It doesn't have to be verbatim, but a couple of sentences that we had this back and forth discussion on that topic needs to be included.
We had that discussion in connection with approving the minutes of that meeting on March 25th, yes?
Correct.
And we amended the minutes and we all voted unanimously to amend the minutes as we discussed them.
Right, but we had a discussion back and forth for about 20 minutes of I wanted to put something in. You all had a different view of it, back and forth. And some of that needs to be included in here as to what we discussed. Now, just to follow up, I took and I called the AG's office, since that's a free phone call. I explained and said, it said "discussion," what do we do when we have a long conversation about a part of our minutes? What do we have to do? And first off, he said putting just the word "discussion" is not adequate. And secondly, he said, and I quote, "Could anyone who did not attend read the minutes and understand what occurred?" And he said, "You probably need to elaborate in there and put a couple of sentences, not the transcript of every word you said, that you had this back and forth about your minutes and what the resolution was and that you ordered the minutes." So we need to put something in there, my concern, your concern, Ron's concern. To have something there about that.
See, I don't understand what that gains us except it gives us another chance to revisit it.
If it had just been the, you know, change capital S to small s, fix a piece of grammar, that kind of thing. You don't have to get elaborate, but he was... As I talked to him, he said, "You need to put something in there because you did have basically a deliberation back and forth about your minutes."
Well, why don't, why don't we do this? Because you must know who you spoke to. Have him send it to us in a email and writing and then we're gonna address it, we'll put it on the agenda.
Have him send what? I doubt he's gonna send us anything in writing because I don't think they'll forward that. I've got his quotes here of what he told us.
Turning down, because they put things in writing all the time. They put plenty in writing all the time. We had a discussion about the minutes, we unanimously approved the minutes.
I'm just telling you, we're in danger of making an open meeting law violation by not elaborating what our discussion was that took us 20 minutes. And so I'm trying to keep us from having that particular problem.
Ron, what do you think?
It'd be a question worth asking counsel.
Well, I really don't, I don't think it's the world, but I think if it's the Attorney General that they can stand to put it in writing.
The attorney of the day, they always, the last thing they say is, "If you want something definitive, we should talk to your counsel." That's it. That kind of standing verbiage. But we could go to our counsel and ask the question.
I wasn't looking...
Or we could save $150 and add a sentence that we discussed... The discussion centered around Paulette's concern about gender discrimination in the workplace.
It was more about people not getting paid.
No.
For hours worked.
The discussion centered around our discussion at the meeting of the 25th, our last discussion that we went back and forth, which was where you had brought up earlier in the meeting about gender discrimination in the workplace. And I didn't think that that was a place to go and that's what the discussion was about.
Because they weren't being paid for hours' work.
That's what...
So...
Our thing.
I'm not trying to make this beyond the minutes a third time. I'm just following up. I don't want us to be...
So is that adequate to add? Is that adequate to add to that?
Textbook email?
Lay it on.
Okay, I have three sentences, okay? Lukar proposed an additional sentence to include her meeting response to Carter's statement. It was, "To include, there had been ongoing for more than two years lack of payment for additional hours' work for two of the women employees in Town Hall. After a lengthy discussion, both Carter and Koller disagreed with Lukar in regards to entering any additional information to the meeting minutes and the word "suggestion" was changed to, in quotes, "reference slash perception." Carter pointed out that he included his concern in the SB meeting itself, not outside the meeting."
I don't, I don't feel if you, Paulette. I could see adding a sentence in there saying that you were concerned about, you know, maybe one sentence. But this seems, I mean, every time we get into commending something here, I don't wanna rehash it. I mean, it seems to me, it doesn't seem appropriate. I really think we should get some counsel.
I'm not as much worried about rehashing. I don't want another open meeting law violation, which is why I called the AG and he said, "What do we need to do? How can we do this so we don't have a violation?" And like I said, it was a short conversation. "Could anyone who did not attend read the minutes and understand what occurred?" That is how we're supposed to be doing our minutes. He said that's the general rule. So bringing that back, obviously the word "discussion" was not going to be sufficient. Now, if you've got some other sentences you'd like to put in there, that's fine. I just know we need to put something from my conversation with the AG. And it was Attorney, what, Jonathan Scleresic? That's how he pronounces it. Could be short, could be whatever, but we have to put something. And if you don't want to, you can vote.
This makes a great vehicle to bring us back to the same discussion that you wanted last week. Exactly. Brings you exactly back to the same place.
We talked about it for 20 minutes.
Can't work through what we voted unanimously to approve it the way it was, unanimously.
I'm not talking that we didn't vote it. I'm just saying we had a 20-minute discussion that just needs to have some clarification of this meeting.
If there needs to be an addition there, that's what I, you heard what I proposed, is that your concern about gender discrimination in the workplace. Because that's what we were talking about. And that was what prompted me to have that discussion with you at the end of the meeting on the 25th. Is I didn't feel that that was the proper place to be going. You feel otherwise, I understand. But that was the heart of our discussion on the 25th.
Right, and our last meeting, I had a sentence I wanted to include that was very important and simple to that effect. And we spent 20 minutes discussing whether or not that should get in there. If you don't wanna do this, I'm just saying I think it's a terrible mistake. But I'm not willing to have your words be my words. Because I wrote down what I wanted and I read it at least three, four times at that meeting. And then we agreed, yes, but that does not mean that we had a long conversation about it. And there should be something in our minutes about that.
See, my concern is, I'm trying to be more tolerant of discussion. In my previous life, I would just call the motion, accept the minutes, two to one, let's get on with business. But I don't want this discussion to dominate the minutes. We're finally catching up with these minutes. And if you wanna add a sentence, I'm okay with that. But I don't want a 20-minute discussion to dominate that motion. The motion was made, it was accepted. The minutes, we came to closure on what the minutes should say. Let's move on. I mean, otherwise, we're gonna be documenting three or four hours of this meeting. Then we're back to the 10-page minutes.
People had been cited and the answers from the AG. Meeting minutes failed to contain an adequate summary of the discussions in each topic. And that truly raised itself to a topic. We spent quite a bit of time. And there are any number of these where boards have been cited. That was my concern, so that we didn't get it.
I'm not disagreeing here that something should be added, but I don't think it needs to be a long lengthy of every detail of it. I think if there's something to be added, I told you. I would move to amend the minutes to say that we had a discussion relative to Lukar's... What did I just say? Gender discrimination in the workplace.
Due to lack of payment. We can add something, we're concerned. But it's due to lack of being paid for hours' work. It's not just a general, "Oh, I think people are being discriminated against." It was very precise and it's been ongoing for two, more than two years. Hence the topic. So I think if we elaborate that sentence a little, that would be fine.
It sounds like an authoritarian sort of comment you're making. When I just came to realize that there were extra hours recently. You know, Lukar said this has been going on for two years. Well, I've been here for three quarters of a year. And I just learned about it after we had asked them not to work the extra hours the other week. So it doesn't seem appropriate that it go in quite like that.
But it has been going on for two years. I've been on the board for two years. It was a topic of discussion.
Well, you had knowledge, but I didn't have knowledge of it.
But that, there's no reason to discount that I don't know about it. I was on the board. I mean, you can't say that we can't put that forward because both of you were after when I was on the board, so hence it doesn't hold. Of course it does.
But I mean, you had knowledge over the last year, this last year?
Two years.
No, I know, before me. But for the last year, after we asked them not to properly record their time, you had knowledge that they were working extra time?
Sure.
Interesting.
Well, yeah, I think, but I think the first time we discussed it was a couple of meetings ago when I said I had written down my January, February hours as we were doing this so that I could give you some idea. And I had done some, a little bit over there. I can take those off as soon as we're through the budget, so I wasn't concerned about that.
I'm just trying to say, it isn't that Paulette's just worried about gender discrimination. It was driven by the fact that I know this has been going on for more than two years. Nor was on the board at that time. So that's a couple of years back. We had conversations, like Mary pointed out. That's where we got that $1,500 as a Band-Aid to try to have a place to charge some hours to when they worked more than 25 in a week. But there was no, in theory, no money there. So hence they didn't leave a time. So it just, I don't want it to sit there, but somehow I'm wildly concerned about gender discrimination. It's in context and they're not being paid.
I didn't vote wildly into that sentence.
I know you did. But it's about the payment, not that I was concerned about.
I told you where I would go. I mean, if you wanted it to be Lukar's concern of gender discrimination in the workplace...
Do you not pay of additional hours' work?
Well, see, I don't know. I don't know if that's really correct just because you're saying so. At some point, at some point, at some point, there's a line between not being paid and volunteering. there's a line between not being paid and volunteering. And we had that discussion before. It's that if you had somebody from out of town doing it, right? They come in from nine to two, and then they punch out and leave. They drive 30 miles back to their home, and they wouldn't worry about it anymore. But we do have locally grown people that work here. And we're always talking about how wonderful it would be to bring volunteers into the Town Hall, right?
But you don't have the employees volunteer. We're right back in the same place again. I'm just saying that my concern had to do, Ann said she'd have 100 hours that she had worked and not been paid for. I know from conversations over the past few years, Mary has worked lots of hours that did not get paid for. That was my concern.
Okay.
So it's not just looking at gender bias. It's in context of their working hours beyond their normal work hours and not getting paid for them. And that only happens in Town Hall for those two people.
Ron, what do you think?
I like the minute to the hour with my amendment. And if we want to have, you want to put this off a week and talk to Town Hall?
I'm not, I really, we're really having, staying caught up with these minutes. I don't want to fall behind. I don't want to fall behind.
I mean, if you could take that paragraph, Paulette, and summarize it in one sentence, I'd listen to what you said.
I'd probably take his first half and add to it my concern of why I was worried about it. I'm hopeful.
Work that out between the two of you. I mean, I just don't care for the...
So what was your first part again?
Discussion of Lukart's concern with gender discrimination in the workplace as it pertains to Town Hall employees.
As a discussion of Lukart's concern. Say that again.
Gender discrimination in the workplace.
Discrimination in the workplace due to...
As...
No, I really want to be specific a little bit. Due to unpaid hours, unpaid work hours. Unpaid hours being worked. Ann said she had 100.
So read that paragraph now.
By employees in Town Hall, how's that? Have a second. I think you said, "Discussion of Lukart's concern regarding..." Was that your word?
Regarding gender discrimination.
In the workplace, due to unpaid work...
Unpaid hours worked.
That's better. Unpaid hours worked by employees in Town Hall. Actually, it's by two employees in Town Hall. I shouldn't make it more general.
Huh?
I shouldn't generalize it, by two employees in Town Hall, because it really centered around Ann anyway. But I don't want to use their names, obviously.
If we're summarizing it in one sentence, let's just say by employees in the Town Hall. It doesn't, it could be one, it could be two. I mean, it could be two, it could be four, whatever. But I don't want to be that strict.
All right. I was just not trying to make it bigger.
Employees are just employees.
It's big enough already.
Okay. So under discussion, instead of just the word discussion. Discussion of Lukart's concern regarding gender discrimination in the workplace due to unpaid hours worked by employees in Town Hall.
As an employee in Town Hall. I wonder if I could just say, the one concern I have about that, and I think at the top of a long sentence, it's nice and clear because it says it's your concern. So that's straightforward. By the end, if it sounds more like a statement of fact as opposed to a concern of yours, I guess my concern is that I've understood it as a process, that there might be time to take time back and so forth. I mean, I don't think that there's, I know, I don't, I can't think of the time when there was a clear-cut discussion. So I just would be uncomfortable.
Couple of years ago, the chair of the personnel board came before the select board, Ron was here, and explained this very same topic. The town needed to be sure.
Right, given the last couple of years, there hasn't... I guess all I'm expressing is a concern that that be stated in a way that says it's a concern of yours as opposed to stipulating that something specific has happened.
Two or three weeks ago, Ann was in the audience and clearly said out loud she had 100 hours unpaid. I think that says a lot. We're not talking just five hours here or there.
But she may also be intending to look for a period of time. We could take back hours and so forth, which...
There's no reason to debate it. I mean, it's a zero-sum game. What we're really talking about here are the minutes. I mean, if we wanted to get into super duper detail on chapter after chapter, we did a great job last week addressing that when we even went through the budget and talked about what adequate salaries were and the positions. So...
I was happy with the sentence.
So I'll move the amendment with what I invented. You have the sentence that she added. I'll move the motion to accept the minutes as amended and included as a document to the...
I don't think it needs to be a document. We just need to take that...
No, the amended minutes do, right?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Discussion just needs to be elaborated. That one word needs to stretch to what the sentence we just discussed.
You understand?
That's right. Yep.
Well, you better make another one, because we're going to put that into the document list since we discussed it.
You want to?
Okay, absolutely.
We can do that. I'll put it back and make sure we make a copy.
You got me into this document list business, you know? I just can't wait to make it bigger and longer.
He made a motion to second minutes?
Would you second it?
I'm seconding.
Okay, all those...
As amended, yep.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye, unanimous. Lynn, probably next week, we have to start off with a little discussion of the discussion.
Okay.
All right. Good, we get through the minutes. We're staying up to date. What a wonderful thing. I thought we were going to get to Kachina's appointment a little early, but here we are. We're right about on time. Didn't we say 7:45? I think so.
I said 7:30.
Did I? I'm sorry, Lynn. Let me pull it up here. Thanks for getting that, so I could look at it over the weekend. So, just so we're on the same page. These are really the same concerns that you're talking about that you came to more with in October, that don't reflect it in the minutes?
Well, and before, and have come since, so, yeah.
Well, that reminded me, it's been two weeks ago. But isn't that what you came for, is that it wasn't, that was nothing in the minutes, right?
Yeah, the minutes were not.
And then I believe that our position was, if you broaden the writing, we'd make sure they got attached this time, so they wouldn't be in the... So this started on your watch, so if you have any comments on it, go for it.
I just, I actually have a question here, Kachina, because I read through and I had written down in January, and maybe you've just, for whatever reason, left it out. You were also at one time said you were concerned about November 7th.
It's possible at this point.
I just, yeah, I had November 7th, 10th, and the 17th, so...
I've gone back and listened, you know, at least a couple of times, but I didn't do it again when I looked at these.
Perhaps what would you like to do for now?
I don't know if there's anything we can really do. I mean, we're just trying to get a pretty good idea of what the problem was back in October that didn't get taken care of. I mean, there's quite a bit of strong language when we start talking about it two or three times, referring to ignorance.
The attachments you sent, Kachina, Rob Anderson, did you ever get to talk to him by phone?
The emails I forwarded, I'm pretty sure I forwarded those already. I have just done it again because Tom said he hadn't been here. So I just attached a few. I know I didn't include everything.
But he highlighted things in...
Yeah, I did include it because originally I wanted to dovetail here, but it's something that come up here, commented on, and he talked about it.
So some of it has to do with not being in the minutes. But some of it, as I read through your recent email, there was still an ongoing problem.
Right, and I guess I just wanted to comment on, because like I said, when I came here, I still stand by why I came. But I felt like the response wasn't...
When you came in October or you came two weeks ago? I'm sorry.
Sorry, no, probably earlier than that. September, phone conversations with Mary, details, so...
So there was a problem with your apartment, and there was an inspection done, yes?
Correct.
And the problem was fixed?
I guess, but not really. According to some people, like I said before...
It's...
To me, it's not. The room is not usable, okay? But I didn't come, like I said last time I was here. I didn't come to the select board to expect you to come over here and take care of it.
Is it not being used because...
It still smelled like mold, and that was the original problem.
Have you asked for another inspection?
I know, because I don't trust our town's Board of Health. And that was part of why I came here and why I spoke to Mary back last summer.
Have you contacted the state board yet?
Yes and no. I was told by Mary that there's no oversight, the oversight is the voters. Charlie Conicki was not very helpful, is that who you're talking about?
Charlie Conicki, the Western State Inspector, right?
I've had an inspector come to the Department of Public Safety with some interest in this, but he's still not come. I don't know if that answered your question?
So work was done, but the problem's not fixed.
Correct.
Just for the record, I remember that Kachina had ongoing litigation, or potential litigation regarding this issue. So I'm just advising her that if you're asking her to admit to whether or not to condition his resolve, the answer's no.
Probably that should have been before she said yes or no.
Well, I think her answer was, she's not sure. It still smelled like mold. So the issue was, if the mold smelled before, the answer is no, it's not resolved.
And she's not exactly qualified to make that determination, since she was not a contractor.
Who are you, ma'am?
I'm a resident at the Ashfield House.
And your name is?
Kelly Jinks.
Kelly, okay, nice to meet you.
You too.
Well... So can we ask anybody to inspect?
Not if it's in the middle of litigation. You think I'm going to jump in both feet in the middle of that? Forget it. Board of Health takes care of it. The state has people to take care of it. If we're right in the middle of threatening litigation back and forth, I'm not going to go near it with a 10-foot pole. Board of Health, I think their minutes are all up on the website, and we've looked, sounds like they've tried to take care of it. If Charlie Conicki's been there, I can, is it a Board of Health issue? Is it, I mean, sometimes there are just issues with landlords. And the select board in the town of Ashfield is not the landlord on that property.
Well, I meant this, could we ask our Board of Health to have the health agent re-inspect the apartment? If work was done, but the problem not fixed, could we ask, ask our Board of Health to ask the agent to re-inspect it? If there's still an ongoing problem there?
I would think it would be up to the tenant or the landlord to take care of that. That would be my position.
I guess I was looking for us to be a little helpful and proactive just in asking our hearing conversation that they need help with.
I can understand where sometimes people want to drive right in and try to be the American Red Cross, but I don't think that we're in that position. I don't think we have the authority. I mean, there was a day, not too long ago, where the Board of Select and where the Board of Health. I don't want to go back to that time. I was there at the very end of that.
I don't think I was proposing that. I was proposing asking our select board if the health agent could go re-inspect to check out all that is done.
I think that's really communication between either the tenant or the landlord and the Board of Health, or the state Board of Health. The state's available to do that. And that, and from the discussion we just had, if Charlie Conicki was there, I know Charlie Conicki.
He wasn't there.
I've known him for 30 years. He didn't come and inspect?
Yeah, there was communication. He didn't come to my apartment, but I'm fine asking.
Did he go to any of the...
No, he's still, he's...
Yes, he got to my house.
And you're...
Deborah Nicholson?
Okay, we haven't met before, so...
No, we haven't. We have now.
Nice to meet you.
Yes, I'm fine. I will contact the Board of Health, and I will ask the agent to come, the health agent to come. So that was out of that.
That's as far as I can go with it all on that. That's, we got all we can do, managing the rest of the town, and the Board of Health has statutory responsibility as far as I am.
If this is going, her email to us with her attachments is going to be documents for this meeting. I would just like to include when Lynn is doing the minutes that we do have this reference from Kachina back January 16 of year 13, where she had that additional date, November 7th, that she cited for us. And she may have left it out of here, but at that day, she had three days she was concerned about. So I'd just like to include it. Because maybe when she was doing this, she didn't remember that, but she had cited it to us that day as an important...
I mean, that's what this whole letter is, is to revisit all of those dates.
I think I know what you're referring to, is because I was mentioned in there, but I didn't like, I didn't think that, like we were talking about before, it accurately reflected it. So that was my concern.
Right.
Before, I was completely omitted, but that was a concern.
Right, I just, if it was important at that time, and you may have missed it here, I just didn't want to exclude it at that time.
So that's really what this is, is that, is revisiting your concerns.
It was a time, yeah. Yeah, my brother.
Okay, so that's how we should have put that into the document list and into the minutes. I get pretty concerned with history reports even written, but I guess that's the way we do things, right? Ron, do you have anything to add?
I have nothing to add.
I think you bring up some concerns that if we get through the budget and so forth, that in here, you know, some questions that as we move further and deeper into this at later date, we can use this to, as a model to go back and, or some questions, rather, that you're asking there to come up with some positions, but not prepared to do it. that you're asking there to come up with some positions, but not prepared to do it, no, I'm not.
We're talking about the questions she asked.
Those questions she asked.
Come back to those at a later time.
Certainly, I would have to do some research on it to have a position at all since I wasn't here. And it was brought up.
And I do recall when she came to meetings, it was early in the spring, even before August, I think. If I could be wrong, I'd have to go back and look at my...
It would have to be reflected in the minutes if the minutes have been approved, right?
Right, but that was her concern and in some cases, they weren't.
Yeah, I have to remember where they are.
I won't change any dates, I'm just talking out loud to you that she may have been here earlier and maybe said something to look for and we weren't recording.
But I hope, I hope, I hope that everything is in here, you know, I mean, you painted with a pretty broad brush, so I'm hoping that your concerns are...
You touched my ability, I tried.
You did fine, you did fine. All right, Ron, you don't have anything for that? Do you have anything else on this? Thank you. All right, Wayne. Town hall steward talking about has got some use applications and I don't have them here.
Very, very helpful.
Yeah, I'm sorry, are you there?
One of them is for the community theater.
Community theater, sorry.
Which that one is, should be all pretty well set. There's another one for council of aging, which I have no problem with. The only thing I would request that the select board waive the fee for the use or because it is a purpose, the purpose of it is for our elderly. It's a little dance and kind of get together for some seniors. And my only stipulation on it is, is providing the buildings left in the same condition, which is all for in the application. And if it's not, then maybe bill whatever the cost would be.
So you're talking about the seniors?
For the seniors. The community theater is all...
Well, let's talk about one at a time. I'm a simple guy.
What do you need to show?
Huh?
Says it's a ballroom dance show, which should be fun to watch.
When is it, Wayne?
Says Friday, May 10.
It's Friday, May 10, admission fee, no admission fee?
No.
Open to the public?
Yeah.
Baked goods and fruit. They're gonna be serving baked goods and fruit. There'll be food...
Tom, that means you can't come.
No, I eat fruit. I've never touched any baked goods. No alcoholic beverages.
Five to nine.
Friday, May 10. Probably be some setup time. Wayne, I see your names on here.
Little bit, but President Alom. A little setup time and hopefully it's at a point in time where we won't need the heat per se.
Like the food sale or the baked goods and the fruit, is that gonna be a fundraiser type thing and maybe...
From what I understand of it, it's just basically, it's something so that the people that are here have some snacks during, no fees necessarily.
Or is it, yes, I'm sorry. I'm looking past you, Wayne, to the other Wayne.
Well, yeah.
I mean, is it, this supposed to be a little bit of a fundraiser and just an activity?
Any entertainment.
Yeah.
We haven't really been able to discuss what we're gonna do about the food beyond, we might have. It's just, it's...
But it's gonna stay down here anyway.
The food will stay down here.
No, we can't go upstairs or there will be nothing. That's, I'm very adamant, there's no food upstairs, period. Water is skipped. Not to people's attention.
Well, if we're not charging and it's an activity for the council on aging, I don't have a problem with waiving the fee if it's on the board as a problem.
That sounds like a good idea.
Is this an annual event or...
This is the first, first time.
First annual?
First annual.
We're trying to move forward. Remind us about the council on aging.
Do I need to sign it? Do you need to sign it?
I have, my signature is on the signature page. And your signature on it is the chair, just for verification that it was accepted by the head.
You told us. You spoke into Dalek. You told him.
He has initially, everybody's been notified of it and he will get that page for his inspection soon as it's approved. That page will go into his slot.
Right.
So that he does that inspection just prior.
Just prior, that's what I was thinking it was a time.
It's three to five days he's got to come in and...
Is there a motion to approve this?
So move?
Second.
With, with no...
Wait, wait.
Wait, wait. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Today must be...
Yes.
I can't believe I went all day without writing a date. And that can go back. All right, so the second one is for the ACT, the Asheville Community Theater. Tell us the... This is kind of a long, drawn-out thing, right? The performances are the 24th and 25th of May and the, and May 31st.
There's two weekend performances plus the, there's a series of...
May 31st and June 1st.
Right. Which is basically their annual...
And the 27th, the 27th is Memorial Day. What happened when they get all set up, I mean, the upper hall is pretty well taken care of. What happens to Memorial Day ceremonies if it rains and we used to be able to move inside?
That was questionable last year and the solution to that was to be able to use the floor and the firehouse for the initial ceremony that goes with the...
The construction and so forth, they do, you don't find that, any construction for the sets and so forth, you don't find that that's a problem?
It's pretty straightforward. This year, I have an issue with them and if they, if they don't comply with what I want this threat, I will pull the plug and they won't have it. But I want them to protect the floor a little bit better with their, where their support's set.
With pads and stuff.
Because that's, does, if it's sitting on that floor, it wiggles a little bit and it will be with scuff mark where it is. And there's no reason that they can't just put a piece of homasone, I'll supply the homasone.
So are they gonna be moving in like the 15th of May to get this all set? I mean, they're gonna take over for half a month.
Most of their rehearsals are pretty calm. It's usually not, it's usually, they do get working on it there somewhat, but a lot of it is not until the last...
Well, the town clerks seem to think that there's quite a little commotion when they're here.
Well, there can be. However, last year, it was stipulated that if there was something going on, like if there was a select board meeting going on like it is right now and they were doing rehearsals upstairs, they were asked to please not make any disturbances. As far as I'm concerned, they did pretty well. Everything that I saw, they were complying with it. Sometimes you'd have somebody walking through here, but that happens anyway, right?
$705.
Yeah, 12 to 23 for rehearsals and setups.
Yeah, there is, the rehearsals are separate.
And then two weekends in a row, Friday, Saturday, Thursday.
Right, so they may not wanna do that. But that's what the revised rates are.
Right. When is the actual performance? The performances, May 24th and 25th and May 31st and November or something. Rehearsal and setups, May 22nd to the 23rd, so really...
You asked about the 27th, they're not here then, are they? Or did that just prompt a conversation about...
So they're all set up though, I think you said we can't use the floor and the stairs.
Oh, they're all set up upstairs.
Right, right, right. You know, whatever, the first sets and...
It's all, they...
Pretty much takes up, the biggest construction is the seating in the middle.
What show are they doing?
I'm not sure. I haven't talked with David to know just what they are. I know it's much lower keyed than, well, last year was lower keyed than the year before when they had, that was a very elaborate performance two years ago.
I think that one, that one was difficult to love.
There was people, it wasn't just the locals, there was a lot of different people because there were so many people involved with the performance that worked just from here, so...
I mean, I'm always, it's not that I have a problem with the theater being here, but for such a long amount of time, you just spent two weeks talking about trying to get work done and the environment for having the town get its work done and its employees. And I'm not opposed. I mean, I'd love to see the town hall being used as long as it's not being...
Abused.
Abused.
Right.
And, uh, but at the same time, I do happen to know that there is a building in town that's terribly underutilized and that's the old range.
That is being used a lot more than you think. There are pretty much regular activities going on in here. I, from the time I joined it, it was nothing. And I put a lot of effort into getting the kitchen done over and getting a lot of things done in there so that it was more presentable and the other members, Nina and different ones, have gone into promoting it. It will almost sustain itself on the people that are using it now. Where no way, I mean, the last two years, or at least this past year, the heat has been left on downstairs all along. Because it was, the budget had enough money to buy all of it. And the community hall is buying it. The boy scouts are not buying it.
No, 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 I'm just saying, I happen to know that...
Oh, yeah.
It's there and there aren't any offices during the day that would get disturbed.
Yeah, that's, that's the other thing. So there is an option of some of their perform, rehearsals possibly could be done down here. Because at this point, there's not gonna be a key access to that there for any event. Because Lynn's office has done her stuff there and this is, if it's open, there was an instance the last time where someone was left in there that if they had taken it out of here when they left, it wouldn't have been a problem because nobody would have known, but they left it behind. The girls noticed it, I noticed it. Not gonna happen again.
So, I mean, the fee schedule is what the fee schedule is. It just, I think it seems like $705 from, you know, in the best circumstances, they're gonna, they're gonna be here from the 12th to probably the 2nd or 3rd. Right? Because they're gonna have to tear down after that.
Yeah.
But if it...
If they're gonna tear down, they're good. They have in the past been very good, so, you know, getting things cleaned up, you know, not leaving a mess behind. I mean, there's less involved there than there is for Fall Festival as far as the activity goes on. Fall Festival, and Fall Festival is very good at cleaning up on a regular basis.
Right.
And the people that are involved with the community theater, I made a point two years ago that you clean it up, you be careful what you're doing in here or you won't have a good reception. So the last two years and whatnot, they've taken a little extra care, make sure that things are, you know. But somebody that's working up there on something, if I'm not watching them, they'll have to slip something through.
Right, it's your recommendation to approve this?
My recommendation is to approve it, yes.
Is there a motion?
One sec.
Go ahead.
Do we need to perhaps, they didn't include the days that they're going to need to be in here to take stuff away. Do we usually include the days when people have to come back to remove whatever they brought in?
We haven't in the past.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
And I did have a question on that. You've given us an updated form. This is like May 11th.
It hasn't been approved yet. We haven't gone through, I'm in the middle of doing the insurance thing now is to come up with. I have what?
And you got that information today?
I have a sheet that the town halls covered this. So now we know if it's a town entity, the town hall insurance basically will cover it. But if it's somebody else, it's like, if Nan puts on something, then she needs to provide a paper that lists the town of Asheville as being one of the insured under...
Right, the name, so it has an insurance. And this isn't a town event, this is a private event. So I think we should...
Town hall's coverage would cover it per se, but...
We sent you back to get some more details.
Right, and that's what...
We haven't got that information together yet to bring it up.
No, that, I'm trying not to pressure you guys until the budget's over with.
Well, keep disappearing to this whole vacuum.
No, I've seen your issues with the old applications.
Right, yeah.
I watered tray this time around to get the new policy and get all the quirks out of it as much as possible. So this is the third time I've gone through changes on that thing. I really, I don't like going over the changes because it's frustrating trying, it's like you have one here that is, it's not, some of them aren't cut and dry. Some of them have situations that have to be evaluated at the time before they're passed. And some of them are, all right, they're straightforward, providing the application is.
Was it on the front page?
Yeah, maybe. Insurance coverage of 1 million bottle injury. That's if it's liquor, if it's, that's what it would be if they were serving liquor in here.
And the new policy, there is no liquor at all, period. That is totally out of the picture.
I think we do need, I mean, this is a highly trafficked event, you know, probably more so than the Fall Festival. Well, you've got these performers in here for all these days, right, coming in and out, so your exposure is...
You don't have hundreds of people in here like you do on Fall Festival. These, depending on the size of the performance and how many people are in it, is basically what you're gonna have.
Organizing people walking around.
Fall Festival, you gotta, this place is full. Two days, everything in this building is wall-to-wall people for two whole days, right?
Yeah, I've been here. So do you think they need, that you wanna not approve this and wait to find out on the insurance? How far away do you think the building committee is on figuring out that insurance deal?
30 days plus.
This is an entity that does insure, right? I mean, they have their own insurance.
They must have. We have never pushed that.
I mean, it doesn't cost anything to have us named as an additional insurer.
That's basically all it is.
Their insurance company just...
They do a quick little write-up for the...
Whatever the insurance is, I would suggest that we get an insurance certificate and...
For them.
Get us named as an additional insurer. It's very important to...
I have no problem with that.
That's, I mean, that's proved.
I mean, if that's a stipulation gonna be set by the select board, then before I process it back through, then I would seek to it if they do.
How much coverage is adequate? I mean, that's the question.
One to three.
Mine is set one to 3 million.
One to three is basically what Asheville's insurance company says.
We should see a certificate with one to 3 million that stipulates that Asheville has been added as an additional insured for the period of time of use.
Asheville's actually a combined... Asheville's actually a combined, is that, is it five point something?
The, the town hall building is about one point two, about.
And then, but there's three different things.
But there's a second and a third stage anyway, the total is five point four under a full blanket.
So I'll make a motion to approve this, then we can talk about it in the discussion, to approve this application for the Asheville Community Theater contingent upon them providing us with a certificate of insurance limits one slash three million, uh, naming the town of Asheville as the additional insurer.
I think that's perfect, myself, you second that, so Paula, let's second it, then the discussion on it.
I just wanted to say, did they mark down they're getting a fee?
Yes.
There, there's a fee for attending.
Yeah.
Okay. That's up to something. I mean, yes, there is.
So what we wanna see is a, is a minimum of a million dollars.
Right.
I mean, you're not gonna insure for one to three million.
No, I think it's one is general, how's it go, general liabilities one and then per occurrence and the one in the body is kind of the standard, it's not a range, it's a, it's a different thing.
It's a format, I guess.
So before they're issued keys.
They need a certificate of insurance.
Certificate will need to be with.
How does that happen? Did you get it?
I will contact either through me, through Mary, David, and let him know that this is what's required. And once that's back here, either I or somebody from here, there's somebody who's in there when somebody comes in. Because there is places for when key got picked up and how much and so on and so forth as far as.
Okay, so, note on that?
I was gonna make a note, if approved it, I would say that.
Approved on producing of insurance.
With certificate of insurance. All right. Any other discussion?
Maybe town should have a copy of certificate, they'll keep a copy, they'll give a copy.
Right, we'll get a copy, I mean, I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna send the certificate of insurance to the town hall. They call the insurance company, they'll say.
The insurance company will send, yeah, maybe should send it to town hall.
Any other discussion? All those papers, say aye, aye, nay. All right.
Mary, I will press it for you, was that like a day or two, two? Get that, pass it straight to her. We have another meeting. It's not already done.
Sorry it took so long, I think it's.
Ah, no problem, I'm sure I did miss a lot in here.
Maybe that back home's more of a playhouse than a, you know. All right, I put only with certificate of insurance liability, one to three million. Good, good, good. Okay, let's assume the position where we left off last week, on the budget. What do you get that big look on your face for when I said that?
Cause I had a question and I was wondering if we could discuss it, I know it's not on the agenda, but they send us the expense report.
Yeah.
And I was following down through all their changes and I don't know if you happened to notice, it looks like they only added on five thousand. And we had that other seven, so when will they add the seven to that legal expense account? You know, we voted five, seven on the warrant and only five is here, I would have expected that to say twelve cause it was all going into the legal expense.
You're catching me up, one week when that didn't start.
Yeah, and I don't think that that's actually on there now, perhaps because Joyce was out for a week.
The five is there, the five is there, so I was surprised that it wasn't twelve instead of five. So the seven.
So the seven isn't maybe, uh.
It's not in the total there, I'm.
Yeah, so we can check with her tomorrow, maybe, I know she was catching up. Cause she's been away for a week or so, so maybe there's.
I wasn't sure if I got missed or overlooked, so that's.
It was, it's, it's odd, it is odd that it was overlooked because it was on the same town meeting.
It was, I'm gonna say more.
So Paula, you're saying that the five should be?
In the, the column, budget revisions for legal expense, the warrant, I mean, the March thirteenth meeting, we voted five and seven and it was all going into legal expense, so I would have expected that to say twelve.
Twelve, yeah, me too.
Is there anything else on that that seemed, uh, on the, like I said, that was, I didn't, I didn't study the, I was looking at the budget this weekend and I didn't really look at the expense report.
No, that was the only one that I, that I spotted quickly.
How about under the tax total expense, wasn't that gonna be, I mean, we were taking, we were transferring money from that account, right? So it says original budget seventy-five hundred. Shouldn't, shouldn't that gone down, should there be a negative sign there?
So maybe that's where the seven went by mistake.
Because it was supposed to come out of that, I believe.
Yep.
Well, we took, we took, um, we took several things out of tax.
Yeah, I mean, we've got a little too.
So it actually went up by almost nine points.
I think, I think you just wanna send something to Catherine and Joyce and.
Well, Joyce will be here tomorrow, will take the certified special town meeting warrant.
I think you just need it back.
I suspect it just didn't come out of there.
Didn't get moved around yet.
We'll go over it.
I mean, if I remember right, that was gonna leave that account with something like three thousand dollars, I thought. But I'd have to go through my notes.
Okay. So we got all the way through public safety last week on Wednesday.
Before the public safety, I have a revision. The extra two air packs at seven seventy-five each. I saw that on Friday, the price has gone up seventy-five dollars each, so it would be another hundred and fifty dollars alone to be able to purchase two. Sharing whatever.
Hundred and fifty bucks.
More, to buy two of those air.
So they can carry around the light ones instead of the heavy ones.
Well.
They're gonna die with us to death, I don't have a problem with that, but I don't hear it. So we can just add a hundred and fifty dollars into that line, that's fine.
He just got a new information.
Maybe he want, he wanted, uh, he wanted three to begin with, so.
Right.
It's gonna end up with the same amount of money almost when you get done.
So they're now eight fifty instead of seven seventy-five.
We better get that greater part before that goes up.
Thank you.
No, that's great. All right, cultural and recreational expenses. I always have trouble figuring out which is the cultural and which is the recreational. That's just me. Belvin Memorial Library, thirty-three, eight-twenty, certainly not a huge increase. And didn't even come in with an extended list of what they really like. Only talked about library, not that I recall, I'm not looking in my book right at the moment. But it was pretty straightforward, we talked about the other funds they have available and so forth.
I don't know which they have here.
I think I'll call it the library cultural and then the arts will call that recreational.
There you go.
What are you doing with veterans' rights?
Huh? Veterans' rights? It's not here.
Cultural, that's after the recreation, oh, here's a library.
It wasn't an extended bush list on that.
Something concerning.
I think it's already added in.
Oh, that's good.
Oh. Three, no, cause this is not three three eight two oh, this was here, then that seems to be the.
Yeah, this was additional.
That was an additional request.
This amount should be added to the town appropriation.
To the three three eight two oh, so it's three one eight oh. And that says.
I mean, there's a case to be made for it.
Our time library assistant for Saturdays, five hours. And substituting for the librarian when she takes sick days or vacation days. Doesn't make sense. Doesn't make sense, I mean, somebody's gotta cover up the library, it's not good. Otherwise you gotta shut the library down.
What do we wanna do?
Have you gone through, I just received this, but can we see the light of day on this thing, looking at the last page?
Not yet, not yet, not yet.
Good for you.
But Mary, uh, well, let's, well, Mary, Mary, uh, we sent her last week to make contact with the vocational schools.
Yep.
Mary, Mary can report better than I can, but it's a pretty large number that we're overfunded this year. It looks like that we are over.
Overfunded and it's always, it's always a estimate, you don't know how many students there will be, um, you don't necessarily know how many buses there'll be based on how to figure out their routes. Well, you never know.
You never know.
You never know by the time you pass the budget to change, or to September can change during the year and even for the FY thirteen appropriation. It's, um, you know, a student could go in next week and it could make a difference, so, but it looks like it would be, it looks like there will be ninety thousand.
Nine zero.
Nine zero.
That's three students?
Unexpend.
More or less? Is it like thirty thousand or something?
It's about eighteen thousand. I mean, I think when you take, when you take transportation, it's probably twenty-two.
So that's four students, more or less, more or less.
So, um.
Well, that's good.
I mean, if you look at page one, Mary massaged her number from four hundred and thirty down to four hundred thousand. That's, you'll see it's in bold print on page number one. And that, that's probably being pretty liberal at this point, but we don't know how many students.
Because, and we don't know if the bus routes are good, we're doing two and a half bus routes right now, um, our total transportation for FY thirteen is eighty-one thousand nine ninety-two. That, that could come down if we go to two bus routes, but it could also go up even if we were two bus routes and depending on where the students were. Actually, no, that would tie into whether there needed to be more than two. And tradition right.
I think what, what we're saying right now when we're talking about the fourteen budget is, uh, you know, it's probably gonna be four hundred or less, cause we have students graduating and we don't know how many students are going in.
What did they, on the library, they say to, uh, substitute for librarian, when she takes sick days and vacation days? I mean, certainly for the last twenty years, forty years, a hundred years, they've had vacation days and sick days, they don't close a library down, so what do they do?
They tell the librarian, you can't be sick or take any vacation. I'm not sure.
I think it's come from other parts of the budget or, you know.
So they're shifting that part to the town appropriated part, sounds, you know.
I believe, I believe, cause I, I know that you're right, that, that there is somebody there.
I mean, I don't have an issue with the Saturday, I think, I think supportive libraries and I think Saturday's a good day for people who weren't working, their parents could take their children there and stuff. Makes sense, I was just wondering about that.
I wonder if maybe there wasn't an official librarian in there, maybe just the volunteers.
If there was a sick day or something.
I don't know.
I think, I think it's always been a need when, um, and then they have that look at other.
I mean, that's a ten percent jump, right, more or less.
It could very well be that what they did this one, the librarian was sick, they used her pay to pay somebody else to do that job for that day.
Oh, she's dead.
Mary, is that a good?
She's not, yeah, she's been a month or so.
She has enough hours, right? So add in?
Sure.
Under appropriation.
Which one, which one are you looking at to add in from the previous budget?
We're gonna add thirty-one, three thousand one hundred and eighty dollars to Belvin Memorial Library.
To fund a part-time library, so.
And under comments, say Saturday hours, right?
Belvin Memorial Car.
It's in the same building. But they had a very specific budget.
One of them said, here's the budget, I'm outta here.
Yeah, I do remember that.
Here's next year's budget, I'm outta here.
That was March thirteenth.
And they didn't think they needed any sand, that was the piece that was.
It was every other year, right?
So this is.
The obvious.
Do you want to have a list of recommendations or maybe discuss if sand might be happy? Just remember, I've studied it one property at a time, it's not enough.
Seems like the water testing's been that deep for Bell forever.
I don't see.
All right, we all settled that?
So the only change under cultural recreation is.
No, that, we just, that's as far as Memorial.
All right, sorry, okay.
So this is the first request for money from the historical commission.
And that is related to two thousand fifteen, two hundred and fifty, right, or should we?
Yes. Matter of fact, I wasn't here for that meeting when you guys discussed it, so. But that's in preparation.
And also a celebration of the anniversary of the bicentennial of the building, which is. And it's, and it's specifically seed money for starting the plan.
Five hundred dollars, did it sound like five hundred dollars was enough for?
I saw they put.
Who came in, Owen? Who came in?
I think that was, um.
Go to, Stephen.
Oh, Stephen?
And it just says seed money for organizing this celebration of the, uh, cess, where bicentennial of the town, bicentennial of the town hall.
Nobody came in from the veterans' race.
And I called Kurt and asked if that needed to go up a little bit because I remember we had a discussion about it last year. And I even put in eleven hundred, actually, remembering the discussion last year of when I talked to Kurt, the chef. He talked me out of it and said he thought they were, okay?
Well, they've only got three hundred and sixty-four dollars left to use at Memorial Day.
Some of that extra money from last year is they needed to get markers.
They did, right, and.
And they had a backlog, right, markers, so that may be what some of that would expend, would expand.
So what's left is probably for Memorial Day.
Who handles that, Kurt or Wayne or?
Kurt's the, I talked to Wayne and he said, talk to Kurt, so I talked to Kurt, I mean, I've talked to both of them about it at different times, but this time in preparing the budget, I talked to both of them. Wayne didn't really have anything to address. Kurt, I told him, I put it in at eleven hundred, and he said, a thousand.
All right, anybody have any problem with that?
Well, I'm wondering if he's trying to be cautious, because last year, he put a few extra dollars in there. But I'd need to see him really sure of this one.
He's got three hundred and sixty-five dollars in there right now.
He thinks he's, he thinks that's right.
He thinks he's okay, he thinks he's okay.
I was pretty careful, because I did remember last year there was a concern, and I wanted to make sure that it was a.
So that town website.
Cultural request.
We moved that nine hundred over and that requested in our IT expense, right?
Yep.
I'm surprised the town history fund hasn't asked for any money. You haven't heard anything from Phyllis or Dawn or?
No, and I spoke to them, and I said, I spoke to both of them, went back from the beginning, asked, I think I put a form in their box.
If it's going to need money, I would, and I'll, I'll talk to one of them. I'd rather put a little in when we have some than to have them come ten days before they want to start publishing.
Yeah, and I can get back in touch, do if you'd like, or if you'd like.
I'll see one of you though.
All right.
All right. Okay, we knocked another one off, cultural recreation, well, now down to sanitation.
So now I can say just one change there.
Yes. Little Town Resource Management, they just never seem to go up on that.
No, I talked to Eric Wise about it. Again, was surprised, actually, I think last year, did we, no, I think it was, I remember writing tip will go up, but I think that was a philanthrop. But, no, he said, he said that's it, and I've talked to him pretty frequently in the last two weeks for a variety of reasons.
Transfer Station.
Well, now there, actually, it might make sense to get back to Tom, given.
Given.
Given the DDP letter, I did talk to him after that. And. Didn't make sure it'd go up, but maybe that's a good one to check one more time. Because there's some, there's some work that will have to happen there.
Yeah, but they, uh, looks to me like there's thirty thousand dollars left in it, or that's what balance remain, that's the second column on your line.
So maybe he's figuring he'll get the use of that.
There's thirty thousand dollars left in there right now. And maybe, all we've got left is April, half of March, right? I don't know, April, or in April already, May, June, right? We've only got two and a half months left. And they were built in the war on Transfer Station this week. All right, there's.
It's not more used to mess where I was behind the transit getting a bill, what I mean? Because sixty-two percent isn't.
I'm sure Whittles gets right after it.
And some of this may be there to get some work done, I mean, maybe once.
I'll tell you what I really think.
We get a little further along.
Because I think for the little town of Asheville, we do a tremendous job in recycling. And that just kills our typical piece, I mean. When they, when they got said they were moving four recycling, um.
Containers.
Containers in, I said, what in the hell are we doing, trying to make it so nobody can drive around here? But if you go, they, they get filled so fast, and I'm, I am continuously amazed at how the community grabs right onto that and has done that kind of. So I, I think that's, you know, that's a huge savings, huge, huge savings.
I can just check one more time with Tom.
Yeah, no, I don't want to run it up, but it gives no sense in underfinancing it. And utilities, there's three hundred and eighty dollars left, we're only sixty percent of the way through that, so. Tom was concerned about, maybe, did it sound like that shed needs to be rebuilt?
Yeah.
Before, before a stiff wind blows somebody over the back?
Definitely needs more attention.
Have you ever been in it? I haven't, I've only seen it from the outside.
Oh, you've never been in it when the fire's going, and oh my gosh, wonderful, you're wondering if the whole place is going to go up. It's not a new stove.
We might not be able to put a building there, but we'd have to front it, right?
Sometimes with Karen, it's, it's, we feel a little bit weird, like, fearless.
I know, I mean, you know, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a bad site if there was a little bit better building there, that you could put a solar panel on, and you, yeah. I mean, I don't think you could get enough, maybe you could, you know more about it than I do to operate the hydraulics on that.
For heating or for electricity?
No, for electricity, yeah. I mean, probably couldn't do that, but.
Utilities, nine hundred, how much, how expensive is like a solar panel, how long before you could get?
I don't think you could do it, I mean, you, you could offset the difference, maybe with the solar.
Stay with the, yeah.
Solar panel would, uh?
Refugee, yes, refuge garden turned into, right?
You know where they have, when you go in and find, when I pull in over on that side, there's the long, long rooming, and there's a roof on there. Is that structure sound enough to have panels?
It's tucked into the woods pretty tight there.
Too.
I'd have to lock herself as, with her strength in that, but they're pretty heavy and you have to maintain them, and it's good to be able to wipe snow off of them and such, so, isn't that a tin roof?
That recycle, that recycling building, you know, that was, that was all, very much the same as the bathhouse at the lake, that was a volunteer project.
Sure.
So the only other way to do the panels is make them freestanding there, you know?
Let's just kind of throw it out there.
That would be interesting.
It'd be a good grant, wouldn't it, when you think about it?
Especially if we could make some heat for the building.
Too bad that dump wasn't up, you know, I mean. It's settled, but, I mean, up over the top of the crest of the hill, so you could really get some.
Would be nice, it's over the edge of it, if you had this wide open area, there's, it is somewhat open, you know, where they used to pile the trash over, but you put a bunch of solar panels there.
But that'd be facing northwest.
Yeah.
Wouldn't work so hot.
I mean, they could turn it sideways, but it doesn't work.
The good old days, when that was really a dump, you backed up and pushed it over, and then, like, once a year, somebody dumped a load of faulty wiring in and it caught on wildfire. Faulty wiring. So, no, I don't have a problem, it sounds, it looks to me like utilities is funded fine. I mean, you know, how much, how much can it be? You have in, all over. I'm sure the biggest hydraulic, one of the hydraulics will come back by far, so. All right, we made it through sanitation.
What about, what about, what about do sanitation? Inspector Van, do, do I recall the revolving fund that he was talking about?
No, that's, um, that's Animal Control Officer, that's more than Magic Inspector Van, it's far, far in animals, and that's. How come that isn't in the same group with the animal control, why's it in sanitation? Because it's always been that, right?
Okay, that is an answer, thank you.
And remember, we agreed that on Wednesday, or Thursday, rather, that when we met with the finance, we'll come back and read it. And all right, highway and road expenses.
Both are on the stipend, so you can see.
While you're sort of on that boat, and I can certainly hold it till Thursday, but you did ask me to call Betty, regarding handling the government, so I can either share that today or save it for Thursday.
Share while you're thinking of it.
Okay, spoke to her and asked regarding what actually goes on, and she said there was a time when, um, pretty much if you wanted to renew your permit, you'd be going on a Monday, and now what she does is she tries to make it so people are available, because a lot of times it's Saturday, Sunday, and it could be as many as a hundred a year, so. There's quite a bit of traffic, um, doing that, and, um, she was not opposed to stipend.
She wasn't opposed?
She was not opposed.
Does she get anything for it now, or is it?
No, nothing.
She's working without any pay?
So, um, in the conversation, I, I talked about it's a stipend, it's more to say thank you than, Tom, you know, he calls. Maybe help us gas back and forth.
Well, am I the only one that got the letter today from Deval? On the chapter ninety?
No. Oh, well, yes, you're the only, you're the only one, the select board, because it came addressed to you, and so, and also because you're Highway Liaison, so I sent it to Tom.
I don't know why, on this damn thing, the only thing I have trouble closing once I open it is this expense report. Yep, there it goes, there.
Um, but I may have brought it in mail, so.
So there was a letter today, since we're talking about. I think it was actually addressed to Norm Russell.
Wrong too, yeah.
The executive, the office of the governor's a little behind the times.
I get from that to embryo loss, and you can, just so you know, we every so often spend my call trying to change, but.
So I think this is pretty humorous, when we read through it, but I have a sick sense of humor, no doubt. So it says, uh, it's from the governor, says, we are pleased to inform you that on March thirteenth, we filed a transportation bond bill to authorize and fund The Way Forward, a twenty-first century transportation plan. The Way Forward is a comprehensive ten-year plan to modernize and expand our transportation system to spur economic growth, create jobs, and improve the quality of life for residents across the town. The Way Forward, so we're supposed to really get linked into this name of this bond, then. The Way Forward, funded by both existing, funded by both existing revenues and additional revenues raised through our tax reform proposal, provides three point four billion over the next decade to provide three hundred million annually in debt for inflation in chapter ninety funds. This is a fifty percent increase over fiscal year thirteen, to be distributed to cities and towns to support your local transportation needs beginning this spring. So there, the executive office's budget is a fifty percent increase in chapter ninety. So it says, this letter certifies that the town of Asheville, chapter ninety apportionment for fiscal year fourteen is provisionally four hundred and forty-six thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars, based on enactment of the bond bill and, and of new revenue to support providing chapter ninety funding at the three, at three hundred million annually. This is a provisional allocation for information purposes only, no contracts, agreements, or projects are approved for reimbursement until the passage of a bond bill authorizing the chapter ninety program and additional revenue necessary to support the funding. Without the passage of either our tax reform proposal or additional revenue that is derived from options sustainably comparable to that which we have proposed, investment in chapter ninety will not be implemented. So their little act or scheme of changing the sales tax and increasing the income tax, if it passes, there could be a whole lot more chapter ninety to use on the roads. Uh, somebody stands up to them and doesn't think that's the way to go, we'll have to get along with probably what we had. But I thought that was an interesting, it really doesn't mean anything, but boy, it's, it's trying to get everybody behind. It's trying to get behind the actual reform bill, so. So hopefully, Mr. Pule, I mean, before we get too crazy with chapter ninety, let's get paid up on, uh, on our FEMA and NEMA stuff, right? So anyway, chapter ninety, we don't have to talk about the highway and road expenses, as that's a separate item, but. These numbers, we really haven't changed at all in discussing them, from what Tom brought in. And if you take utilities and uniforms and machinery maintenance and put it all up into general highway.
Does this include the new rate for, and the labor we're going to bring on?
Well, I think, I think you're probably overfunded a little bit in labor, because you won't be paying the rate Kurt's rate on any of them.
Four dollars higher.
But did he say he'd like to use some of that money if he could for some summer employees to be doing weed whacking, which would be conceivably less expensive than having?
He didn't want us to run over with that money.
Right. Didn't we add some money, I thought we added something to the general highway, I'm thinking like twenty thousand or something, because, or is that a total of all these other pieces? We didn't do that yet, we talked about it?
We haven't added any extra money into general highway. And if I remember, when Tom was sitting there, he didn't really know if we needed a whole lot more general highway, depending on the amount of chapter ninety money.
And the winter roads, we're, we're running short this year. Do we need to make any adjustment there? I mean, this wasn't the worst year I've ever seen.
No, but.
Using a lot of salt.
The way, it doesn't have to be bad, just the prices have to be bad.
I was thinking he did more salt in the sand than always.
You don't have to, you don't have to do very much, you know, if the price goes up forty dollars, a ton on salt or some such thing as that. You know, take salt and sand, the biggest part of that is trucking, is transportation.
So they're going to raise the tax on fuel that those trucks will be delivering, it'll cost us more for salt.
We're not paying, oh, right, on the delivery truck, sure.
Did we discuss doing something with the lithium maintenance run?
Well, we had a wish list of maybe putting some. Well, we had a wish list of maybe putting some more in there. I was just looking at that actually. I believe that the 2,000 is 1,000 reserved for the report every two years. And then the other 1,000, I think, might be associated with something he submitted on his budget, which he shows that in 2012, he had some riprap and tree work on the dam. But a significantly higher number, if there's any, to be set aside monies for that.
And when I pressed Jamal on that point together, I think felt he wasn't ready, but.
Yeah, but if we wait too long, I don't know where we're going to get the money from. I'd rather have it and have it go back into the town at the end of the year if we don't use it than not have to raise it at a special town meeting. I mean, there's some significant work associated with that report.
What would be a number that you would grant me?
I'd carry $20,000 for the next, you know, three years. And if we didn't use it, we didn't use it.
Well, I have been over there. Are those trees they're talking about that are along the bank that have to go? Are they real, like when Tom tells us they've got to bring a crew in to take them down?
Those are the big ones by no one's house they're talking about. And I'd really want to get an opinion on that before we were doing anything. They're huge oak trees, I believe. But we also know that.
Not just little things we could.
No, those little things we can cut up and chip up in relatively short time. But the dam was also a discussion relative to the repointing of it and cleaning up. They were even talking about painting the bridge and stuff like that. I mean, we do as much as we can with volunteer work, but I really don't have a guess. We don't, you know, they, there assume we know volunteers. And their long range plan was a couple hundred thousand. Their short range plan was somewhere around 50. And I just don't want to incur that expense all in one year or anything. Makes sense to carry something between 10 and 20, I would guess. Then also cutting all the vegetation in that, the other flow channel there. Not the primary one, secondary one. A lot of that can be done with volunteer work also, I imagine. But I know, we had the chipper out back. We paid for the use of the equipment, I believe, but not the labor. It was something like that. Do you remember the Williams's chipper? What do you think?
Well, on a year, when it looks like, I think things will probably come together all right. My position would be, we shouldn't ignore it. If we were real tight, I would say, well, we're going to have to ignore it. So I think this is a good year to put money towards it. And it's something that can carry forward. I mean, the dam does need maintenance.
Does it need to be a separate account for this? So it can be somehow revolving as a, is this one already kind of a revolving account? That just keeps moving forward?
But that's a good idea.
I mean, I think they can pick any single account and carry it forward if there's some good reason for it.
And the other one that needs to be discussed at the same time, because it's not on here, is the retention law. And that's probably the same amount. So if, you know, if it was 10,000 on both sides, maybe it's a good sign or a good show or reserve it some money or something like that until we get a better handle on it.
The wallet, Sanders, you're talking about.
And as soon as the snow is totally melted, I'd like to have our Select Board meet up and just look at it quickly so you understand it.
Does it make any sense to have a combination account where it's lake dam slash Sanders and law maintenance? And because otherwise you gotta be moving the money around. Oh, I need another thousand here or there and whatever. I don't know, just. Or keep it separate?
Yeah, I would keep it separate because then a town meeting, you're discussing.
Use your discretion. Okay.
So how about if we put 15,000 into the dam maintenance and 15,000 into the retention wall reconstruction? And that would lead up to $30,000 that Mary Masada.
Your vote, your vote school.
And for the retention wall, should we add that as a new? There's no line. And it's a new line under capital or?
I would add that right under highway and road expenses. So we discuss them both together.
Under highway.
Put that right in the same section, the highway.
In highway and road expenses. So like retention wall maintenance, that kind of thing?
Bronson, Bronson had one in the retention wall.
Yeah, I can see that. It is actually an old road, that way, that went to San Justin as an old, so.
Was there anything else on any of these? I mean, we're probably going to end up overdrawn on winter roads this year to the tune of a couple of $3,000, which is no big deal. We can take care of that. It's never a problem as long as you got it.
Right.
My grandfather always used to say, "Money is never an issue." It's only to those times when you don't, there isn't enough of it. Street lights are going out. Winter roads, you just don't know. I mean, if we're within $3,000, I think that's fine. General Highway, hey, have any of you got calls? I mean, here we are in April. Have any of you got calls on muddy roads? People calling about the dirt road they live on is, oh my God, it's in this canal.
I called myself about my driveway.
Did you get any satisfaction by people calling yourself?
I took a little drive around to see how bad it was. It's drying up.
Yeah, well, the once the frost comes out, it's great. I went Sunday, went yesterday, and I were traveling and we decided to take some of the dirt road. I thought they were an exceptionally good shade. I thought they looked good.
They did a little repair out our way. We just had some really bad potholes, but generally don't have a problem with it at all. I mean, it's just that frost is in the road, you know, it's going to be real greasy.
Well, and I think there was a lot of the roads not so long ago that there wasn't anywhere near enough gravel on them. And when the frost came out of the clay.
Yeah.
It was.
All washed board and.
Any other additions besides that $30,000 to, or 20, it's actually 28,000, right? Because we're going to add 15 to the 2,000 in the lake dam?
Yeah, 2,000 is already spoken for, so.
So actually change that number to 17,000?
Yeah.
And quick question. All of what we've discussed so far, tonight is falling, is going to get filled in under appropriation?
So far.
I mean, I don't recall, this is what Tom submitted on Asheville Pond Dam. And I believe the report costs $2,000 every two years. So that accounts for $1,000. I don't know where the other 1,000 is coming from. But when I look here, I see riprap and tree work. And I, but it's under 2,012.
I think it just comes from the conversation I had with him. I said, "We know we're going to have to work there some of the sugar or in."
Minimal is a lot better.
And he, you know, and I said, "Could have been more." But I think at that point, he was probably thinking maybe, thinking just in terms of sort of the short-term stuff and the stuff they could ask.
Is there another place for the tie-in bond inspection? Or is this it?
No, that's it.
It's more than $1,000.
I think.
I'm remembering $1,000.
I think we got in the habit of putting $1,000 in every year and carrying it forward, and that just about paid for the inspection.
There's a lake, sorry, there's a lake dam inspection under Public Safety and there's that, and then Alena and Sandra Highway.
Thank you.
Okay. And so, yeah, there's just maintenance and then maintenance up to 2, now up to 17,000.
Ready to go to Human Services? Any issues with any of that?
You'll see Veterans Council went down a little bit. And if I will, just to see if I can understand why you exchanged messages.
Wayne, $500 enough to maintain that van?
Yes.
Okay. That's an answer.
And I may be able to put more than into the other if things were covered.
Well, if it was going to cost more, the reason I was asking is, let's deal with it now instead of coming back later.
Even for all those tires you had to do, or you still had some tires?
I just had your two tires. And now that I can get the vehicle out.
You got them.
I'm not too happy with the log job here. Next year, that's not going to fly because for the information of this Select Board, they're going to have to do something different. We're going to use the van the way you should.
You've got it stored in the old.
It's the only place we've got. If I put it outdoors.
I'm not arguing with you, Wayne. I'm just asking.
No, that's where it is.
Confirming that that's where it is.
I wish the park had not taken that other building down and tried a cement floor and a much better door. But they did.
So the local council 250, that's just to support whatever the local council does for the most time?
Some of that would go for food that you were talking about. Probably that would be next year.
The food issues.
So you're just going to check on that Veterans Council and Veterans Benefits?
Should we roll that all into one so that they have the full 750 instead of splitting that into two pieces like that? I mean, if they want to spend $50 more because they got to repair, then they, you know, those two things could be sub-accounts just under COA Council. It's not big money, but it gives them some flexibility.
But you said you can move it. That would actually require.
Right.
That would give you, you know.
But I live doubt that anybody on the council would have an objection to that being a one account. But when asked to address the funding, it's going to be got to include a different.
I don't believe that's going to be a good problem.
Do you want justice for mine? COA Council or something?
One line?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that would, you know, if you can't, if you can't get more money, at least we can put a couple of them together to make it look bigger.
Hey, compared to two years ago, when we were, we couldn't even get a stick around.
They just decided to take the local, under senior, that local council and the Council on Aging Van Maintenance and just make it one line. And then if they need a couple extra bucks to buy a love nut, they don't have to.
Yeah. Have a town meeting.
That's right.
So combine under what?
Just, you wouldn't want to call it local.
Council Van Maintenance?
COA Council?
Yeah, local COA Council.
Well, that's actually what, Council on Aging? So local COA, maybe?
Yeah.
Another council that's redundant?
They're all good there. Employee benefits. Have we done a lot of work on this, Merron?
We have. We did some more today. So we did have the, jumping down Retirement System contribution. The new assessment was $73,063, but.
Are we still paying that in arrears?
Oh, we will be for, we will be for a long time because of unfunded mandates. The OPEV, the other coastal program, program benefit adjustments. Those are a lot for a long time.
Well, it used to be that you didn't pay somebody's retirement into the system until they retired.
Right. Now you have to account for it all the way through.
But we're playing catch.
We're playing catch-up. Friggin' country retirement system, as I understand it, is one of the best in the state in terms of the catch-up is not as egregious as it is for the state and most of the other retirement systems in the state and any of them in the country. So they've done a pretty good job, but there is, we will be seeing increases for a while for that reason. But today, after Laura and I spent some time talking about both that and the lie of appropriation under.
Liability.
Right, the insurance buildings and liability. And it's going up 3,000, but we will commit to the 5%, which we usually do. But have put it in in case there was any issue or problem. But we will commit to both of those. So both of those have been reduced by the 5% one payment option.
How about our health benefits lines here? We've done any research or got any notes from?
And I actually asked Laura to look at that every few weeks, and she has not made an adjustment. And I haven't dug into it beyond.
Are we in, what's the state rule? There's a state.
Yeah, I don't know, but I think we, I think we may be, but we.
No, it's for health, it's what the teachers are in and a few others. It's the.
I think I know what you're talking about.
Starts with a G or it has a, has a G. It's like a general insurance consortium.
Oh, I know what you're talking about. And no, I think I meant to ask her that and I haven't. I think that was a note.
I can't remember the acronym for it right now.
I think it was a note, maybe from another meeting I remember. And so let me make a note, ask her about that. When we do discuss it, she talks about number of retirees.
And on health insurance right now, the town's paying how much?
65%.
How much is it?
65%.
I don't think so. How much is a retiree's? I think we pay a lot.
Retirees' health.
And retirees' health. I think it's a lower portion, but.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I want to do it off the top.
I think there's 50% for retirees.
Whatever.
Yeah, so maybe.
I think, I think probably.
Percent retirees.
If there's, if there's time, at least try to make an attempt to do some research before Thursday night.
Yep. Now, that Medicare FICA has got to go up. I mean, other than the 2% changes, because we're making some changes here in Town Hall with ours and all of that. There need to be something there.
Let me go over all of that with Laura again.
That won't be a huge step down.
No, but it'd be more than if we just did 2%.
Right, and I don't want to say off the top of my head. I remember Laura did write us numbers. And I think we were all a little surprised that it wasn't much of an improvement. But I'll see if she and I can just make the point to actually sit down and unpack all of these numbers a little more.
Well.
But I do, I do check with her about once a week to say, does this still seem right to you?
I mean, Medicare FICA, we appropriated 11, 220, and we're only 57% of the way through it.
I mean, I think they're all built with a.
And that includes the payroll warrant that we just signed tonight.
Since when?
Now, remember, they just changed FICA in January, right? It went up the 2% in January.
But just for the employee, not for the employer. The employer.
Well, that's right. The employer always paid their share, that's right.
And so we, I mean, we probably build these numbers each year with a little bit conservatively putting in enough to be sure that would be covered, so.
I think that whole, that whole employee benefit needs to be just pre-senched. Any answers that we have for Thursday night would get us one step closer to. I mean, there isn't a whole lot you're going to do about it unless we go to peeling the employees part down to 30% or something. That would not be terribly popular. We wouldn't have to worry about some of the employees. What's that?
I was just commenting on her comment of 18% increase. That's 1.8%.
Yes.
Workman's comp, workers' comp?
Oh, this Dr., sorry.
Dr. Desmond White. I think that was the first mistake of the year.
Had to be one.
Council on Government? These are all updated numbers that they gave us.
They are.
Any questions or comments or?
These are all assessments.
Only that I think we're still waiting to sign the contract for FY thirteen for the accountant's service. But the ball's in their court, so.
And what he said is things moved past, he got involved in things he knows that.
But we're paying it.
Yeah, we're, we're paying it. They're providing the service and it, that's what counts.
Was there something screwed up on it that held it up to begin with, that it wasn't at the beginning?
There's a lot of back and forth about some of the details of the terms. And so it went back to them to see if they would accept the final changes in wording.
And somebody agreed to, but I think he, didn't he say something to him? Well, didn't he say something to you about that?
I didn't.
The accountant contract?
No, I haven't been asking it at all. How, how in the world can they agree to do something for one town when they're not doing it for the other towns?
I was under the impression that maybe they had similar comments from similar towns. And they were in the process of pulling.
I think that may be what is, wasn't just us.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that section?
No.
Sewer expenses, boy, that's one I missed with, that I was, I was gone for that.
Were you a very sweet question?
Yeah, I was a sweet question for, I think you were.
I was at the same time, as I thought I was.
Six years. I hope, two times. Any questions or comments on that? That's separate from our regular budget. That's all enterprise stuff.
Right.
You know what would be a good number to know? Is how much is in, how, just, it's a good discussion and maybe if they made, they took this and they were here and I missed it.
Right, can you hear me?
We came during it. How much is in, we came during it?
Thank you, check.
All right. Hey, we're getting to the end, page five, debt service accounts. Debt service accounts, yes.
So the Town Common Principle, as we've discussed, has got two payments, FY fourteen and FY fifteen. And then it's done, right? And the highway debt, the truck, that's got another payment for FY fifteen, and then that's done. The garage.
People want the bread.
Now, the fire debt, the fire truck, that's its first payment, but then that means FY fifteen, that one's gonna be done as well? My understanding, that's working?
We've got two years on that, right?
Well, it says viral ninety-four. It says in fourteen, they'll pay forty-nine, so it must just be one more payment in fifteen, and then that one's done. So we've got three things all ending in.
I guess I would start at the top of the list on short-term interest. I'm wondering, is it seventy-five hundred dollars that we appropriated this year gonna get us through?
What falls under the?
Uh, just borrowing operating money.
Oh, okay.
Giving money before the tax bills.
Right. So it's like the credit line or something.
And I'm noticing, I'm not noticing here that there's only two thousand dollars left in that account. I mean, you know, everything hits just right and you get your reimbursements back the way you're supposed to. There's a lot of you, I don't think we do any better.
Right.
That was one of the reasons of going to quarter the tax.
To prove cash flow.
Was to eliminate going to the bank.
And what do we usually run? Do you have any idea? Well, not the interest, but the principal, when we borrow. Is there a limit? Is it a hundred thousand?
I think you could, I think you could, but everything the town needs, you have your authority for if you wanted to. But the treasurer will normally set off the alarms. Right? And check books, that's looking like it's gonna hit red. I mean, for seventy-five hundred dollars, I would ask Laura.
Okay, yeah, because it's, it's sort of on track for where it is, but if it was a year where, it's gonna be okay.
What do you think we should do about, I mean, I'm all excited about the report that Kulik says they're gonna pay the a hundred percent, you know, they're gonna make sure it happens. I wonder how much the state has to say about the FEMA portion, but he's talking about a hundred percent or twenty-five percent.
Right.
Do you feel that we should pay any on that note or?
One of the things he said is possibly two payments, like half in thirteen and half in fourteen.
Maybe twenty percent like the next five years, I hate to say.
So one would think if we're gonna get anything in thirteen, how long can they wait for us to tell us? I mean, by July one, we'd have to know, right?
Well, they should pass the budget, so as the governor passes his budget and his tax reform, they're gonna pay everybody every time.
So if they were gonna even do half of that in thirteen, could we just coast and not do anything if we're gonna get that money?
Good question.
I, I'm not opposed to that. The only thing that I would, if, if, if it looks like we got green lights all the way, I would propose that we at least budget enough to pay the interest on that when that note comes due. I mean, it's a small amount, right? It's gonna be, it's gonna be fifteen hundred dollars.
Because you gotta have a contingency line in case they don't.
Well, that's not, that's not.
The interest would be due.
Right, right. I mean, you don't wanna roll over the interest too.
No.
I don't think that makes sense, but.
It's at point five-nine percent or something?
So, yeah, so six tenths of a percent on two hundred thousand dollars is twelve hundred bucks.
Seems to be something.
What did we borrow? How much?
Hundred ninety-two thousand, hundred ninety.
Ninety-five.
Okay.
It was under two hundred.
Yeah.
So it's a couple grand interest.
So two hundred.
That was easy for me.
So would we have a new line item for that?
I would, I would put a new line item.
Why would you put it into short-term interest?
Because I don't think, it's not operating type. I mean, I think it was for a special deal to pay the, pay that out.
Where would you put? Same place debt service.
I'd put it right in debt service and I would put it, interest payment on.
FEMA loan.
FEMA. FEMA, FEMA MEMA loan or whatever you want. We'll figure out what the interest is gonna be when it comes time to roll that over and hopefully we'll get enough money back that we'll only have to roll over half of it. That would be excellent.
And do you want it to put the twelve hundred in that?
Well, whatever that interest is.
So we're just trying to think, if we were trying to position ourselves so if they, if we didn't get the green lights and they didn't do any money, and it looks like they're not doing anything for fourteen, we would possibly still be able to do something during the mid-FY fourteen to pay down part of that loan. It'd probably be part of a special town meeting, but it would tie with something else to pay some of that down.
That was just a question that I was gonna ask. I mean, my understanding is that when that reimbursement comes in, that can go directly to paying down the note.
Right, it really, in my talks with Phil Argo at DOR, he said you will use all that money for that. I said, yes.
But it doesn't need to go to town meeting vote.
No.
Because that's part of that emergency chapter.
That's right.
So when that money goes in, it'll go automatically to paying the principal on that note.
So if, if for FY thirteen and then FY fourteen, MEMA money did not show up during FY fourteen, we would have to, during a special town meeting, if we wanted to put any money down and pay off any part of that loan, ourselves would have to. So you'd sort of be hoping that there would be some kind of. Or even in the end, DOR that finished with FY thirteen.
Or you roll it, it was a beautiful one. You roll, it's a choice.
We can, we can roll it, we can roll it for ten years.
Okay.
We can just roll it for ten years. And if the state comes across hard times, I bet you'll find that you can roll it for another ten years.
Okay.
So add that line. You leave seventy-five hundred dollars in short term unless the treasurer's seen.
Yeah, no, I've got a mark.
That's not, let's get to.
I'll need to look around a bunch of things to know, so.
Let's get to this Town Common Principle. I've got a scheme. Why don't we pay the interest out of appropriation and take thirty thousand dollars from free cash and pay the sucker off?
What's your logic, sir?
My logic is that we'll get it out of the way, that this is not a true debt. This comes against the levy and it's gonna free up some tax money in the levy for this year and for next year. I think we've done a good job on this budget, but I can kinda think that come September, October, that we're gonna say we're gonna need some extra money for something before they set the tax rate and then we, we'll have some extra money in the tax rate to go to, when we don't have any free cash.
Right. So this is the first time we're dipping into it, right?
Yeah, but didn't I, did I say a reserve account? Were we gonna take that from free cash?
No, we did capital, yeah, no, it was the reserve account for free cash. The capital was from other debt exclusions, right?
Well, reserve account, every year comes from free cash, right?
No, each year you go through and you decide what's appropriation and what's something else. It doesn't depend.
I think, I think we normally have, I always have a ninety over free cash for that, but it's six or one half of that, it really is.
I don't think that this Town Common Principle is, is not like the traditional debt exclusion, to just get voted in.
It wasn't done as a debt exclusion.
Well, it just wasn't done as a debt exclusion. The town voted to just do it as part of the levy and.
So are you ready to have me fill in the thirteen, twenty?
I mean, does that, I mean, does that explain what?
Yeah.
I think.
It's competing with other resources, right?
It's competing with other resources. And let's get it out of the way. By taking it out of free cash, it's, it's leaving room in, in, it's money that doesn't need to be raised at this time off the taxpayer.
Right.
Or next year either.
And the debt service, can you do the greater?
Yeah, oh, yeah, the greater. No, no, we won't have any payment on the greater next year. If the greater passes, you will have no payment on the greater next year. You won't have a payment on that until fiscal fifteen.
Because you'll be doing it now here, so kind of moving against.
Well, we haven't worked out the terms of the motion for the, and you'll see, we also have a.
Even if you borrowed a hundred percent of it, you wouldn't have any payment on the greater in fourteen.
Why?
Because you'd be borrowing it all and you pay it, you pay it back for the first payment, it'd be the payment that actually being fifty.
I was thinking maybe it wasn't gonna be ready for us.
Well, that's not, that's not beyond the realm of possibility.
So when I'm looking at free cash just over the years a little bit, I see in two thousand and twelve, we really loved starting balance of like seventy-five grand or something like that. And two thousand and thirteen, we were, free cash is three forty-two. Is that what it is? I see starting balance of three oh five, ending balance of one oh six, used in the budget.
Oh, okay, yes.
So I mean, if we took our free cash and knocked off thirty, we'd still be at a pretty high number, three ten or something or something. It seems fairly safe as far as.
I mean, my, I think you took, get that out of the way and put a hundred thousand dollars towards the greater, you'd still be okay. And at that point, David would want to put a big chunk in stabilization, which is not, I think that's, that'd be a big discussion Thursday night. Should be. I hope we get that done.
Given we talked about it, can we come up with a line item to put in to make sure we discussed the idea of the stipend for the person who's doing the permits, gun permits? There's a better word for that.
Gun permit person?
No.
Firearms clerk?
Thank you. Firearms is the word I'm looking for. Firearms permits.
And we want some of that debt portion, and we know we gotta pay the other debt, and we know what the interest is. So what, we've been talking about this greater, moving forward on this greater. We've got three hundred and forty-two thousand and so far, we, so far, we've taken about thirty-five thousand, thirty-two thousand dollars out of free cash. I mean, we'll see how the numbers come out when Mary runs the rest of it. What would you like to do? A hundred thousand dollars for the greater and then borrow up to two hundred, two hundred thousand, you know, whatever it is.
If the rate is so reasonable and inexpensive, why would we wanna finance more of it if it's possibly the cheapest that it's ever going to be and just run it a few more years and not throw free cash into it, that's payment to it?
There's a lot of different schools of thought on that.
Asking a question.
My school, well, I mean, I'm not telling you that I know the exact answer. I mean, there's a lot of wizards that do it and find themselves in trouble. I, I just tend to wanna get it paid for. This is a particularly lush time on free cash, and I think it's a good time to get some of it out of the way. I mean, I think your concern, a few weeks ago when we discussed it about trying to keep it so it had little effect on the tax rate, is a good reason to pay a bunch of it early. I mean, let's say we, in fifteen, we went in and we had five hundred thousand dollars worth of free cash. That doesn't mean that we have to pay that debt out of, off the tax rate. We could pay that debt still. Even though we had the exclusion, we could pay that out of free cash. We can make those decisions at the time that we wanna make those decisions on where it wants to come from, but it kinda gets it out of the way of the levy. Yeah, I don't see any, I think if we're gonna do it, I'd move forward. And I think long range, the plan falls apart if you're saying, well, you know, we'll finance it for ten years and we'll, you know, spread this out. Well, the problem is two years down the road, once you do that, and then you buy a new backhoe and then you buy a new truck and if you find yourself in the same position, having to do those same. and then you buy a new truck, and if you find yourself in the same position having to do those same things, you're not saving anybody anything because you're having to stack debt. And probably the debt two and three years down the road, my guess is it'll be more expensive. At some point, money's going to have to start costing somebody some money, or it's, we're all in really big trouble.
What did the fire truck, um, what did we finance that at?
One.
Is it really one?
One.
For?
We read it, it was one.
1%?
1%.
For how many years?
Uh, it's a, it's an annual note that revolves, right? It's not a set term, I think it's an annual.
Oh, really?
I believe.
I'm not talking about the FEMA MIMA thing.
No, no, the fire truck.
Yeah.
I think they wrote it for 1%.
Because it was like, we only financed 94,000. Yeah. So we paid something on it. Because I think it was about 100, we allocated up to, rolled it up to 150,000, if I recall. Not to 70, or pretty close to it.
So this would be similar, this would be taking a third. You know, if it was 150, this is taking 50 payment towards it and carrying 100,000 for to be determined time at a very low interest rate.
Does Tom have anybody that can give him some figures quickly to know that that 285 number, 285 to 300 is still solid within the ballpark?
That makes a lot of sense. I'd hate to find out if it was 320 or some other number.
Which number, Tom?
Well, I...
The greater?
I mean, it's going to be, somebody's going to shoot from the hip a little bit on it, but... I tend to think that he had that 280, 285 number. I'm trying to find where we, what we, the highway, oh, highway truck purchase. Purchase, no, no, no. Not highway truck, I'm sorry, fire truck. What would that be under last year? Uh, the fire department.
Last year, we did a bit of debt exclusion.
Yeah, but we didn't exclude all of it.
No, no, we're just going to see on the first hand until this year.
Yeah, you don't even have the truck yet. It's somewhere.
You, you know, you can do research. Oh, okay.
Well, tell me what you're thinking on the greater. You want, at some point, Mary's going to get a article in there on that. And Thursday night, they're certainly going to want to know what our thoughts are. I'm, I'm all in at doing $100,000 out of free cash and then, you know, on the debt exclusion, up to 200,000, in other words, it comes in at 285, we will finance 185. And that would really be out of discretion. I mean, we should have a plan until town meeting on how soon we want to pay it. I don't know if we can pay it over 40 years, if we can get it over it.
And there was no amount specified through the ballot. It's only a vote to do with debt exclusion. So the numbers are going to show about the annual town meeting, not on the ballot.
That's right. That's right.
Yeah, it sounds fine for me to, your approach.
And if they can squeeze a couple of years out of the backhoe, we'll be putting up some other stuff. We can, you know, maybe, maybe next year, if we have a bunch of free cash, we can tuck a little into an account, set it aside. So can you drill that onto the warrant?
Yeah, okay.
Don't worry, we'll get that. Don't be thinking you need to bury that at the end.
No, that's...
If you have it early, maybe we can get Lenny Roberts there to tell us why we shouldn't.
There you go.
So the motion on that will read?
That's, that's what's in the, on the ballot.
Oh, okay.
Right, so...
So it's going to read to see if the town will vote to appropriate...
Take the one from last year from the, for the fire truck? I would think it would be similar, just different numbers.
Yeah, it's Article 7 to see if the town, no, hold on. Uh, it's Article 6, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of X and to borrow up to X for the purpose of purchasing a highway greater provided by the Department of National Security Borrowed or expended here under less than until the town votes as an election to exempt from the provisions of MGL, et cetera.
So let's put in 100,000 and to borrow up to 200,000.
There are things...
My concern with the money, with the price, is that I hope it doesn't just include the greater. I hope it includes the wing in the snowplow. Unless the one off of ours, you know, I think the plow is fairly new, probably that's universal. But the great, the wing, that can be... I bet that could eat up 40 grand pretty fast, but we'll see.
So since I'm going to try to bring a motions version as well, this takes care of the article. Appropriating or transfer 100K, I can take that, but we leave that number in the article. For the motion, do you know where you might want that to come from or do you want to leave that?
What's that? $100,000 from free cash? You got available funds.
Yeah. Yeah, no, just since I'm doing, I'm going to start doing the motions too.
The number that Tom has, the 285 or whatever. You would, given that that wing is that important, it seems to be he would have asked somebody to...
I, I, I would assume that, but I'll double check.
Because it's a critical piece for him. When we were talking the other day about it, he was talking about what they use it for.
Unless we know what they have, they will move on. But I'll double check. And I'll make sure that we get that information by...
Mary?
I'm going to be traveling.
I'll take them.
Just get...
They're going to go to your wing and snowplow.
Email, smoke signal, whatever you use to get ahold of it.
Yeah, I did that too.
So I think we've been pretty much a success. The only thing, and we'll know about that if the numbers are wrong, but what would we think about, how big a balance would we like left in free cash? So we have an idea how much to transfer to stabilization.
So it's 118 that you're going to take out based on the reserve, the 15 for the town common and the 100 here. Is there anything else?
I think it's more than that.
It's 133.
What's the other one I'm missing?
Two 15s.
What was for town common?
That's 15 twice.
We're going to do both of them this year.
Right, clean it right up.
I missed that.
Okay.
So roughly, that gives you 200 left.
Fill me in on the balancing act between stabilization and free cash, if you will.
Stabilization. It's, it's a simple majority vote to put in the stabilization. It's two thirds to take it out. The whole idea on stabilization is to help stabilize the tax rate. So if you had a big enough balance in stabilization, you hit that to say, okay, we're going to, we're going to hit it so we don't have to ask for a two and a half override, you know, and still make progress. I mean, for our budget, the balance that we have in free cash is, I mean, and stabilization is, you know, it's a balance, you know, it's not like we don't have any, but it's not, you know, 200, on a 4 million plus budget, having 216,000 in stabilization is not, to me, it's not big money. Oh, yeah, it's not big money.
So how much money can we leave in free cash to go into fiscal year 14?
How brave are you?
What's a reasonable number to do? Because you've got to have something around because...
Yeah, I think you're going to have it. I think you are going to have it. Remember, on July 1st, regardless if you leave 200,000 or 20,000, you have zero on July 1st until the Department of Revenue will recertify you.
Which is usually like a very...
So I'm thinking that, let's say Mary's wrong on vocational and there's not near 90,000. Let's say there's 60,000. We've got some other accounts that I think there's a balance in that we can, you know, clean up at the end of the year. So I would, I would be very comfortable leaving only, after annual town meeting, only leaving $50,000 in free cash. And put the rest in stabilization. Because I think when you're doing the end of the year cleanup, you've got that vocational edge should be a good size number. For this year. For this year, and you can transfer those numbers or that money around and clean up and then...
Now, we do think that there won't be as much going into free cash certification next year, and I'm not sure I understand this exactly, because of the FEMA reimbursements and the way they came in this year.
Even though they didn't come in enough.
So if you took free cash down to 50,000, isn't that maybe, I don't know a lot of experience here, it seems like a really low number. Makes me very concerned. But that's only because I don't understand the dynamics.
Because I'm, I'm, I'm looking, right, we're just trying to figure out stabilization. And I'm, I'm looking at some of these other accounts that I think there'll be a sizable amount of money left in after annual town meeting. I mean, you're just like vocational. Right at the end of the fiscal year on fiscal year 13.
And that money go to free cash?
It'll go to free cash unless we need it to balance some of these other accounts out, you know, if we go over a few hundred dollars in police or whatever.
And do you need SDM for that? Okay, so you can do it.
You're going to need a special town meeting. I mean, generally, you do.
Maybe it's good, now it's time to go out and address something, just as you're talking about accounts that will go to free cash. The narrow band mandate under public safety that was funded for 12,000 in FY13, we have not spent it. Um, in talking to a number of people about the...
So what kind of a mandate is that? They mandated we appropriated it, but no...
They mandated it, they gave us, the state gave us an estimate, we appropriated it, we appropriated it. I guess that's what I said. And as we moved toward trying to get the, all the units reprogrammed, the phones, emergency phones reprogrammed, it got a little more complicated. Looks like, um, for COG does have some homeland security money that they're going to allocate to the towns with that. However, we do have an issue out in Spruce Corner with areas that, where the emergency services, equipment, phones do not work. And would like to get a repeater out there at some point. It would cost more than this. But one of the things we talked about doing is taking this line and making it one of the lines that we would carry through so that that would be a start on doing that. Just to address which lines might go back.
There's still some money left that the tax collector doesn't need.
Oh, yes.
Tax title, I mean, there's, but if there's, if...
I'm discussing with that regard.
If you're off by 30%, I mean, if you're off way out of line by 30% on what the vocational, after you've called both of them, there's still $60,000 there that if we don't need it for something before the end of the fiscal year to appropriate for something, it's going to, it's going to end up back in free cash anyway. So I'm not, I mean, and it's not like we're spending it. We're setting it aside for if we really need to replace the backhoe, that would be, if we didn't have a lot of free cash, that would be an account we would go to.
That was going to be my question. Because that backhoe, as we talked about, it seems like it has some, I don't know, side effects and maintenance issues, but I gather it is not as on the edge of the end of its life as the greater.
Well, the greater is just hard to get parts for. I mean, it's difficult, John Deere, Bakley can get parts. I don't hate John Deere. I mean, you know, I mean, they're, they're, well, no, they're just readily available.
What's the ratio you like to have between free cash and stabilization?
Oh, boy.
I know when you think about it.
It would probably be, we'd be great if we were at 15%.
Free cash is a function of...
No, 15, stabilization, 15% of the budget.
Oh.
So if you had a $4 million budget, it'd be nice, that's 600,000 of stabilization, I think. I mean, that, I mean, you're asking, that's one guy's opinion.
And so you'd be bunking this up by how much, stabilization?
If we had 200,000 and we were happy with 50,000 of free cash, we'd add 150. So 150 on top of 210, 220, it gives us to 370, pretty close to 370 grand, right?
How much of a surprise last year? I remember when free cash was certified, we decided to pay off the fire truck a little bit faster, right? How, how much was your, was our estimate that we were going to get in free cash versus what came in certified? Was it a big surprise to us, like 50,000 more, is that?
It's a huge surprise to me to have 340.
I don't remember seeing an estimate.
I remember Doug came in May and said, we got certified or something. But I thought it was more than we anticipated.
Right, it wasn't that there was an estimate specifically, but I think...
But didn't some Irene money come in from that?
And that's what I'm saying, Doug, we won't expect that kind of, to see that in free cash each year.
Oh, you won't?
So it could be a lot, you know, you could have only maybe 150,000 in free cash next year this time to be working through the budget.
You could. But also then in stabilization, which requires a different vote, but is there for the same purposes?
You can use a frame.
So you could always, the, the only difference is the vote, basically. And it goes to stabilization of the tax rate. You can't do that out of free cash.
Oh, you can, if you have it. But if you don't have it, if you don't have free cash, let's say we only got certified for $100,000 in free cash and we have, something blows a big hole in the budget, right? And you don't have free cash to pay for hardly anything, but you really need to do something and you know you're not going to get a two and a half override.
Right.
Then you just go to stabilization and then, so your expenses, you can maintain whatever level is prudent without affecting the tax rate.
Tom, is one of the differences that... Tom, is one other difference that, for example, when we were looking into the emergency loan, and there was some concern that if, if the loan wasn't provided for, which it was by the emergency borrowing, they would take that out of free cash.
Yeah, but see, I mean, if you're borrowing, I'm not concerned about that anymore.
No, no, right, but I'm saying that so the state does that as part of the process of certified with cash.
If you had a big no doubt.
But if it's stabilization, the state will not reach
If you had a big no doubt, I think that without a special emergency borrowing provision, they would count that against your free cash, they would dock you, they gotta say, you gotta have money to cover.
I see.
But I'm asking if stabilization figures similarly, I don't think so.
They're not, they won't dock you your stabilization.
Right, so that's a second difference.
Oh, I see, that's a good point.
It's tucking it away.
So if we hypothetically looked at 15 and said that the Mohawk district was going to go up 100,000, I'm rounding, as it did this year, where would that put us if we had a very small
Well, we'll know more about it when Mayor Talis these numbers on how much levy, I still think you're gonna have a little bit of excess levy. We usually try to make sure we want a little bit.
Some.
I mean, probably the thing that would be a good projection, I don't know if it would be, it would be one projection of where free cash will be is to find out from the assessors if you really want to know what our situation is with excess overlay at this point. And, you know, sometimes there's 75,000, sometimes there's, sometimes there's 150,000.
And they're still asking us to hold the usual 25, I'm trying to see if there's gonna change in that.
But at some point, see, the excess overlay goes to free cash also. So if there was a lot of tax collection and not very many abatements, and things were getting cleaned up from prior years, all of a sudden, that could be 75, 80,000, 100,000 dollars if free cash goes to free cash, since it's not required in overlay.
I see.
I mean, fiscal year 10, let's say $30,000 of overlay for abatements and that sort of thing, and unpaid taxes. Well, so when the taxes get paid up, so that 30,000 or 10,000, that becomes excess. Everything's getting cleaned up.
So that black gets carried forward.
So that $10,000 isn't needed in that fiscal year. And then all of a sudden, that'll go, and every fiscal year is its own bucket. So it's a little bit of a complicated form.
But it gets carried to the prison.
It gets carried to free cash.
Because this is a revale year, they are slower, for some things I've asked for, they just
No, it's an engine, no pressure on it, you know, I wouldn't, I mean, but that's a barometer, I guess, of what free cash might be. Free cash is, I mean, I I'll let, you have any idea, I mean, any thoughts on, and I don't, I don't really think we have to make a decision on it right now, but I think it's nice that we are prepared to talk to the finance committee about it.
It seems like 100 and 100 is not a good split. So the difference is, should it be 150 and 50, or is it 125 and 75? Because other than that, it's not gonna get down to it.
I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's, I don't know if there's such a thing as a good and a bad. I mean, I'm just throwing it out there that I would probably
Seems really a function of, how much free cash do we think we would leave next year?
On July 1st, you have zero.
Until it's all over?
Right. You have zero, so everything else in the world, you involve, you know, how exactly they come up with the number, I've not found it.
Can you take out of stabilization and put back to free cash, or?
You can take out of stabilization and take it right to what you want to use it for.
But it's still a process of vote.
I wouldn't vote it, I would vote something out of stabilization that requires two-thirds to put it in free cash, that only requires a majority. Tech, that probably wouldn't work for me. But there's always something that you can get two-thirds of a vote on, you know. I mean, if you needed an extra $100,000 for schools, like you just talked about, you'll always get two-thirds.
So that's the, that's the interesting dynamic, is the difference between that majority, simple majority.
You can just take that and stick that in your account, and nobody's gonna mess with it.
What's the finance board gonna think? I mean, you're on it for a hundred years.
I think they'll be all for it. The only thing that, if they do want to be stabilization, they would probably want to pay more than the grader. If somebody had a problem.
If, if we said we wanted to put some money aside because we know there's equipment coming down the road, is it just, it's still stabilization, there's no other kind of account you can put it in? It's just you'd be earmarking it for
I think the earmarking just makes it more difficult, because eight months down the road, you may say, geez, you know, I really don't want it for that, I'd like it for something else.
That confuses it so much.
Yep, there's no other kind of account, I guess, so there's no other word to put one of aside.
So I just wonder. Have us discuss it, and we got four days to think about it, or three days to think about it before service day. I think that'll be a good discussion, hopefully these numbers, that, of course, we spent the $30,000, but hopefully there's more, you know, from that vocational deal. But, I mean, if you did talk about what we put towards the dam and the retaining wall, that way more covers what we did in salaries, you know, I mean, it's
So, I'm gonna be asked before, last year for the fire truck, we took from free cash 50,000, borrowed up to 98 for a total of 148.
How big a prayer, again?
Last year for the fire truck, we took 50 from free cash, borrowed up to 98 for a total of 148. And it passed two-thirds, 81 to 4.
And that came out of stabilization?
No, free cash, 50 from free cash, and then borrow up to the 98. Can I, is it, is it all right to mark narrowband mandate for encumbering at the end of the fiscal year, to encumber that 12 to go forward?
I really don't understand what the whole damn thing is about, to be honest with you. I thought, see, the state demanded that it needed to be done, right?
Yep.
But I don't see anything being done.
We started looking at it at the beginning of this fiscal year. Nobody really wanted to take the contracts to do the update, and a few months
Nobody in Asheville, or nobody in the state, or?
I called, I called the radio people for the fire department and so forth, I can't think of their names right now. Nobody was either, nobody would get back.
Probably Western Mass Communication.
It might be, a couple of them. And then at some point, just a few months into it, it wasn't a steady thing, we've heard that Homeland Security, federal money, I assume, funded some radio money for FERC to do the radio, the required radio band updates, reprogramming for free for the county towns. And at the same time, we were looking at the issue of reception, and started looking at what was gonna need to be done out in Spruce Corner to try to fill the hole out there.
Is there a place there where radios and cell phones and nothing left? I'm gonna go to that spot. I'd love to spend a few hours there.
So, and, and, you know, with everything else this year, it just kind of slid and slid.
So, so that's what the mandate is.
The mandate is to reprogram the radios, change the frequency.
If it absolutely has to be done, I would think it'd be all right to encumber it, but we don't have to make that decision today.
Well, and we, we, what we'd hope to be doing is actually getting that work done through the Homeland Security and using this to deal with the hole out there.
Hole out there.
So I would do that, I would start that process by encumbering that line.
What do you think about taking, and I'm looking at what we did in others, taking some of the fire department and rolling it all into one? Because we took the police, we got the police chief, the department, and the fuel. And then for highway, we're going to take and bring that together all into one, should we be taking those last little, take the utilities and the expenses and just call it expenses, and the fuel stays by itself, just like it does with the police? See how police is the fire department, and should we do that with fire and put the utilities with those other expenses all in one, and then you just have to re, sort of, just count?
I'm not for that. I think on fire department, fuel, fuel is a huge wildfire, right? All it takes is two or three brush fires in the spring, or a big house fire, and the fuel gets gobbled up.
Oh, it's doing that by itself, just like this is.
Yeah, and I believe the police fuel, I wouldn't roll up either one of them.
Right, I was wondering on the fire department, do we want to put this together? Because you could, and then you, you put the utilities and these other expenses all together? Because we're doing that with the highway, that's the only reason I asked the police to. We're taking the maintenance, the utilities, the uniforms, and putting it all in the general highway. So that's basically the same kind of idea. Just a question, because then they're, they would be set up sort of similar.
Mayor, you've got on here to review the annual town meeting, but it's five after ten, and somehow, somehow I
You'll have a pocket so you can look at it and discuss it.
Any new business, anything else? I think, I'm really anxious for Thursday night to see how this spreadsheet looks. I think, in my mind, I think it's gonna come out all right. Maybe there's a few things that'll have to be moved, but I mean, we haven't done the Fred Cross for anything, and we haven't done any of that stuff. There's time to do that at another time. Liaison reports?
Maybe before you get on Thursday night, so don't forget to do it. Because I'm gonna post Edict and Idrak tomorrow for us for Thursday. Just, I mean, the finance committee, general FY14 budget discussions, anything else that you really want? Maybe we can be warned or not.
Budget discussion, I mean
I mean, war just part of the budget discussion.
It's fine with me. I don't expect to be coming for it to discuss anything else. I have my budget here now. Liaison reports, do you have something?
I did Friday to the award ceremony, they had, they used the Turner's Falls Fire Department Station. They handed everybody their awards, most of the, mostly smaller towns, and cast out my certificates, took pictures.
Great.
And everybody, all the, a good crowd of all the fire chiefs and, and the people from DCR, I think that they're right. It's clear from everybody that although it sounds like small money, it's significant what they do. Some are buying the equipment to go out into a brush fire, and otherwise they wouldn't have it, and this kind of thing. So, yeah, it's put to good use by all the towns that were getting awarded. They would tell what they're using it for this year, so.
So you went Dell, anybody else from town though?
Didn't see anybody. Might be in the paper, I saw
Lenny Roberts wasn't there to cheer anybody on?
I didn't see any, but I, I saw Diane Macchu.
I was in it, I was in it in the paper.
Yeah, no, she was there.
Thanks for going.
Oh, you're welcome. You're welcome.
There's no mail in my folder. Is there any mail that we need to discuss at 11:15, 10:15, 10:10?
I don't think, so let me take one quick look, but I don't think so, is there anything else? You can take a look at that and see, I don't think it's anything from right now, it's probably, sorry, it probably just something to, for me to
Fantastic, forward.
But I can take that as well.
Just stretch it right over.
Public safety and security. Probably has to depend on the tax, it's one of the awards, under the availability of grants will run from October through September of '14. Boy, they put one down in Williamsburg, when I come around the corner on Williamsburg Road.
What's that?
One of the little trailers there, this one, flashing red and blue lights, and I was like, whoa, I better slow down within 20 miles of the speed limit.
So that first one, you want that to go in after we've got it, and just say something on the top there, or not?
What, a safety deal? Did you, did you get a copy of this to, to the police chief?
I probably did a double check, I usually do, if it comes in and applies to another department, I usually send it right out.
There's up, up to 1.2 million for the municipal, for enforcement mobilizations. Wonder what that means, does that mean more time on for the officers on the road? Pedestrian and bicycle safety enforcement, well, this time of year, I think that's a lot, but that's only 150,000. $275,000 for underage drinking. So it's actually, I think it's, I think it's getting ready for you, but you know. I mean, that, that is kind of interesting, where they're directing the money on this grant, you saw it?
I did.
I mean, $150,000 for bicycle safety, $275,000 for underage alcohol enforcement group. They're really serious about that, right? And then $100,000 for child passenger safety, but then they got 1.2 million for police departments. That's, that's so people get the grant to build up their police department, then when the grant goes away, everybody said, oh, God, we gotta support the police department, we got this. It's not what it says, is it?
No.
Anything else? We're gonna leave again on Thursday night.
Do you have a letter from Dudley, sorry, it's just about your school, I don't know if you wanna
Dudley?
Yep, town of Dudley, they, I think they're, excuse me, wanting to do something about chapter 70. And they are, I actually only glanced at it, so I think that they're probably asking if other select lords want it.
You want to make me a copy or an email, so I can read it, or all of us a copy so we can read that?
Oh, that'd be great.
That's more than I can do at 10:15. Anything else? Any public comment out there? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Let's move.
Second.
I'll vote in favor, say aye. It's unanimous, we're done. Thank you for your participation, it's 10:12.